...are handicapped accessible. Visit www.mcat.org for routes, schedules, and video tutorials on how to ride MCAT. Manatee County Area Transit, where it's easy to ride.
The Florida Department of Transportation is improving traffic flow and increasing our safety at intersections. Roundabouts offer nonstop travel since there is no waiting at stop signs or traffic signals. There's no more red light running. Roundabouts accommodate up to 50% more traffic than traditional intersections. And pulling onto the roads is easier than ever near roundabouts since cars aren't backed up at traffic signals.
All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome. Today is Tuesday, April 11th, 2023, and we're calling to order a regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County. Today is an absolutely beautiful day in Manatee County. And we're going to start the day in our usual fashion. We're going to start by honoring God and by honoring this great nation. Today, we have Pastor Jordan Binkell from Bayside Community Church, who will lead us in prayer, after which Master Sergeant Stanley Diggers, retired United States Army. Apparently, he has a fan back there in the audience. Two fans? He spent 19 years in the serving us in the United States Army. He was awarded the Bronze Star, Meritorious Service Medal, Army Commendation Medal, Army Achievement Medal, Good Conduct Award, NCO Professional Development Award, Overseas Service Ribbon, National Defense Service Ribbon, Kuwait Liberation Medal, and an Expert Marksmanship Badge. So don't mess with Stanley. So he did serve in Desert Storm. He was a platoon sergeant in the 8th Infantry Division for three years, and he was also a Field Artillery Motor Sergeant. So we'll start with the pledge. Sorry, we'll start with the prayer, then we'll go to the pledge. If you're able at this time, please stand. Oh, the pastor didn't make it. Well, we can't start without him. Commissioner Satcher, do you have something? You could, yeah, in your pocket that you could queue up for us.
Let's hope. Lord, we thank you so much for this past, just two days ago, celebrating Resurrection Sunday. We thank you that you sent your son to live and to die for us, and that on the third day, he rose from the grave. We thank you that if we put our trust and our hope in him, that we are promised eternal life, and we're grateful for that. Lord, I pray that today you would be with each of us, that you would lead us and guide us, and for this whole community, that you would watch over Manatee County and its citizens, that you would stay close to each of us. We know that you are even involved and concerned with the small things in life. And so we pray, Lord, that we would listen to you, and as we do that, we know that you will bring us closer and closer to you, and that you will take wonderful care of us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. Nation owes you a debt of gratitude, sir. All right. Commissioners, are there any items you would like removed from today's consent agenda? Any items to pull from consent? Okay, hearing done, we'll go to announcements and updates to the agenda with Mr. Washington, our county administrator. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. Updates to the agenda dated April 7th of 2023. Pledge of Allegiance: Army veteran Stan Diggers, Master Sergeant, to lead the pledge of allegiance instead of Marine veteran Colonel John Saputo. Changes to the consent agenda: Development Services, item 13, approval of final plat and associated documents for Hillwood Phase 1 through 3, District 1. This agenda item was updated to correct the cover sheet. Financial Management, item 17, execution of agreement number 23-R08-1528-SAM for a multipurpose permanent engineered tent structure at Premier Sports Campus. This agenda item was added to the agenda. Public Works, item 27, authorization to advertise and set a public hearing to consider Ordinance 23-69, no through commercial vehicles on Waterline Road from Ry Road East to Dam Road and Dam Road from Waterline Road to State Road 64. This agenda item was updated to include a draft copy of Ordinance 23-69 and the request for legal services response. Updates to the regular agenda: Development Services, item 32, approval of GAAP funding loan request to NDC Construction Company on behalf of 920 Manatee Associates LLC for 920 Manatee, the project, and authorize the county administrator to subsequently execute an Affordable Workforce Housing Project Loan Term Letter with NDC Construction Company on behalf of 920 Manatee Association LLC for 920 Manatee, District 3. This agenda item was updated to include the draft Affordable Workforce Housing Project Loan Term Letter, which will be subsequently executed later. Commissioner Agenda Item Updates: Commissioner Baugh, item 33, authorization to send a letter to support to Governor, a letter of support to Governor DeSantis back in the Moving Florida Forward Infrastructure Initiative. This agenda item was added to the agenda. Commissioner Satcher, item 37, update to discussion of personnel policy. The agenda item was updated to include written correspondence. Changes to the agenda dated April 10th, 2023. Commissioner Agenda Items and Comments: Commissioner Ron, item 34, adoption of Resolution R-23-057, establishing an investment oversight committee and adopting Manatee County's investment policy under Section 218.415 Florida Statute of District 3. The agenda item was updated with a revised Resolution R-23-057, which changes the committee's name from Investment Oversight Committee to Investment Advisory Committee, and updates the membership to include a member of the public who is in the investment professional field. Those are all the updates. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Washington. I'm going to jump ahead in the agenda to item number 10, which falls under the administrator. It's adoption of Resolution R-23-047, naming Field Number 4 at GT Bray Park, the John Carlock Field. First, I'll introduce Mr. Carlock, and then we have a quick video that we're going to play after that. So Coach John Carlock started coaching baseball at Manatee High School in 1983. He took over the softball program in 1993. Coach Carlock stepped away from softball in 2003, only to return from '08 until 2013, in which he completed his tenure as the all-time leader in wins for Manatee High Girls' fast pitch softball. Coach Carlock won 160 games as the head baseball coach and 133 games as the head softball coach, combining for 293 wins. Coach Carlock also won three state championships while an assistant coach, as an assistant football coach at Manatee High School. Coach Carlock's greatest joy came from seeing his players move on to the next level, and several even went on to the major leagues. John Carlock is a Vietnam veteran, a retired educator, and a grandfather. Coach Carlock has proudly served our students and our children at Manatee High School for four decades. So now, David, if you'll play the video.
My love for baseball comes from my Uncle Bob. I can't remember how old I was, and I saw him turn a triple play, catching a line drive barehanded, stepping on the bag, and throwing the first. From that point on, I was spending my weekends in Uncle Bob's. Being a coach is a significant part of my life, and having a field named after me is truly humbling. I want to thank my family for their unwavering support, have always been there for me through the good times and the bad, and I could not have done it without them. I also want to thank my colleagues. Coaching baseball is a team effort, and I have been fortunate enough to work with some of the best. To the players I have coached over the years, thank you for giving me the opportunity to teach and guide you. It has been one of my greatest joys of my career. Lastly, I want to thank the community for recognizing the impact that baseball can have on our lives. It is my hope that this field will be a place where young people can learn and grow, just as I did. Play ball.
I would like to make a motion at this time that this board direct the county attorney to rename, draft a proclamation renaming the Manatee High Baseball Field, which is Baseball Field 4 at GT Bray, the Coach John Carlock Field. So Commissioners, that is the proposed motion to rename Field 4 at GT Bray Park, the John Carlock Field. So we have a motion by Commissioner Ron. It's seconded, well, it was already seconded on the board by Commissioner Bearden, I'm sorry. He's, he's.
No, you know what? That's the proper way.
Okay, so motion by Commissioner Ron to approve the motion is written, has been seconded by Commissioner Bearden. We'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on item number 10 on today's agenda, which is renaming GT Bray Field 4, the John Carlock Field? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment, and we'll move forward with the vote at this time. Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Congratulations, Coach. All right, next, we'll move into awards. We'll start with a presentation of Employee of the Month Award, which is Steve Kemper. If Steve will come on down. And Steve is with Public Safety, so I assume...
They're going the wrong way.
They're all going the wrong way. Yeah, they're, don't worry, in an emergency, they're, they're much more efficient. If I'd said hurry to the podium, it would have been a different story. All right. Ms. Fisk?
Good morning. So it's actually really, really great today that our Employee of the Month is from Public Safety but also supports our ECC telecommunications. When you think of an Employee of the Month, there's a lot of, I think, really positive things that come to mind, but the first one is an individual who is such a team player that every time something comes up, he asks, what can I do? How can I support? And I've known Steve a very short time. However, I think that his direct supervisor will be happy to provide some more details on that. I can, however, say that even in my short time at Public Safety, I've never heard anybody mention Steve's name without saying what a great guy he is to work with. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to his direct supervisor.
Steve Kemper has been nominated for the Employee of the Month because he shows commitment, demonstrates a passion for his job, and exhibits patience when working with our customers. He goes above and beyond to implement technical processes to automate daily tasks which help improve public safety workflows. Steve shares his knowledge and puts forth the extra effort necessary to provide the best IT support for the 911 Center, EMS, fire, and law enforcement. He is a valued member of the team, and I'm so happy to work with him. Thanks.
So for the, you did a great job, but for the record, I need you to state your name to the microphone.
Anne Chance, Public Safety.
Thank you so much. All right, who is up next?
So Steve, would you like to step up and say anything?
I hope so. We have to get you to the microphone, sir. State your first and last name, please.
I'm Steve Kemper. I just want to say thank you, and I really appreciate the recognition, and I'm, yeah, thank you.
My name is Renee Temlinson. I'm the ECC chief, and I just wanted to say that I've only been here a short time as well, but any tasks that he has been tasked with, or anything that we ask him to do, or anything at all, how can I help? Where can I help? When can I help? And I appreciate that, coming on, making me feel welcome, and supporting the 911 Center and the telecommunications any way that he can. And he likes to stay behind the scenes, but we're glad that he's here and he's with us, and he does such a wonderful job. Thank you.
So Steve, good.
So Steve, we present you with the Employee of the Month Award. Thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you.
All right, so Mr. Washington is on the board first. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to say congratulations, Steve, and we want to thank you for your continued support of this organization and this community. Well deserved.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Steve. We appreciate dedication you put in. Screen a blank, there we go. Dedication you put into our, our residents and our community every single day, and without you and all of your colleagues, it wouldn't happen. I mean, I think back to Hurricane Ian at the EOC, and how calm and cool everybody was, and the jobs were getting done, and you were keeping people safe, and what you do every day makes a difference in the lives of every single person in this community. So we thank you, sir. All right, next, we have Presentation of Retirement Award for Stan Diggers. Well, he gives the pledge, and he is out. That's that. It's like your swan song at the end, Mr. Diggers.
That's Stan.
And Fleet Maintenance Superintendent. So I assume Mr. Butzow will be presenting?
Stan Diggers. We need an R.
Oh, I apologize. There is an R in there. I chose not to pronounce it.
Good morning. Matthew Case, Fleet Manager. Definitely an honor and a pleasure to be here today, and pardon me if I do get a little emotional, but Stan and I have worked together a long time. So just a little tidbit back to 2009, young Matt Case coming into Manatee County, and guess who Matt's boss was? This guy right here. We had, we have had so much fun over the years. Stan has been a mentor, an advisor, a subject matter expert, and not only that, a friend. And he has helped me so much in my career. We both have climbed the career ladder, climbing to the top and next top spot in Manatee County Government Fleet. We've worked very hard. He has been an integral part of us winning every award that we win, industry, setting the industry standard, and it truly has been an honor to work with him. It didn't matter if we were working COVID, pandemic, Red Tide, hurricanes. I could call him at 7:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the afternoon, 4:00 in the morning, 7:00 at night. Stan would answer the phone. So with that, I thank you for being a friend, and I really wish you well. Thank you. So with that, we also have several other members of staff who have worked with Stan in his 20-plus career here at Manatee County. I'll introduce Nick Delarosa, our interim Fleet Maintenance Operations Chief. Norm Hegel, Ops Chief, will follow behind him, and then we will open it up to the Stan Diggers Fan Club, who is here today to say thank you and goodbye, so.
Good morning. Nicholas Delarosa, interim Fleet Maintenance Operations Chief. I would like to say for the last 20 years, it has truly been an honor, working for, working beside, and working with you. You have not only been a friend, a mentor, and an unforgettable coworker. I honestly believe that once you depart us, the name Stan the Man will echo through the shop bays at all of our shops. Thank you.
Good morning. Norman Hegel, Fleet Operations Chief. I've known Stan for about four years. I'm kind of the new kid on the block here. When I retired from the Marine Corps, the county was the first place that I started working. It's always a challenge when, when you're coming from the Marine Corps and you meet someone in the Army, because we always think that we're the best. And I can tell you this, I've leaned on Stan for, for lots of things. His knowledge in the field, his expertise at work, working with the people, and the guys that work for him underneath his charge. And one thing I can truly tell you about Stan Diggers is that he doesn't just care about what happens at work, he cares about what happens outside of work. If there's someone in need or someone that works in his staff, he's the first person to volunteer himself after hours to help them out, and that takes a truly remarkable person to do that. So from one Marine to an Army soldier, thank you very much, Stan. It was a pleasure knowing you.
How you doing? My name's David Alligood. I'm a Fleet Maintenance Supervisor. Same as everybody else here, we've kind of all started underneath Stan and kind of worked our way up. We want to thank him for his service in the military. We want to thank him for his service here for Manatee County and Fleet Services, and all the lifelong friendships that, that he has made throughout the time. And as Nick said, we call him Daddy.
Yeah.
So Stan, we know you have, from your military time, quite a collection of coins. We want to make sure you depart with at least the Public Works coin for the year and add to that, but many, many happy years of full retirement. We want to see a lot of pictures of that boat on a lake and just whatever that game cam shows me, how you're raising your deer up north.
All right.
Well, Stan the Man?
I don't know where to start now. I just want to thank Manatee County for giving me the opportunity to work here. It's been a challenge, and we've prospered well here, shall we say. We've won about everything there is to win multiple times. I also would like to thank for Manatee County sticking with me when I got run over by the car. It was, it was a tough time, but I appreciate it.
Commissioner Baugh? I'll throw you right in there for the emotional part.
Yeah, I know. Seems to be my day for that, but that's okay. Stan the Man, you know, you have been, in so many ways, a mentor to me, actually. You just didn't even know it. I don't think you knew it, but you have, and, and it's because you're always there. And I heard it mentioned before about anytime you'd answer the phone and so forth. You and I have had a lot of conversation, and it's meant a lot to me. You're very sincere, you're honest, you're truthful, and here's what I love the most about you. Your dedication and love of Manatee County has really shown. So I know you've been through a lot. I remember when you had, when you were hit by the car. I remember all that. It was horrible. And you know what? We're definitely going to miss you. And, and it's not, you know, every time that somebody leaves or they retire that makes it hard. It's people like you that makes it hard for all of us to say goodbye, because we've had the honor and the pleasure.
All right. So Mr. Washington is on the board first. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to say congratulations, Steve, and we want to thank you for your continued support of this organization and this community. Well deserved.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Steve. We appreciate dedication you put in, screen to blank, there we go, dedication you put into our residents and our community every single day. And without you and all of your colleagues, it wouldn't happen. I mean, I think back to Hurricane Ian at the EOC, and how calm and cool everybody was, and the jobs were getting done, and you were keeping people safe. And what you do every day makes a difference in the lives of every single person in this community. So we thank you, sir. All right, next, we have Presentation of Retirement Award for Stan Diggers. Well, he gives the pledge, and he is out. That's that. It's like your swan song at the end, Mr. Diggers. And Fleet Maintenance Superintendent. So I assume Mr. Butz will be presenting?
Stan Driggers. We need an R.
Oh, I apologize. There is an R in there. I chose not to pronounce it.
Good morning. Matthew Case, Fleet Manager. Definitely an honor and a pleasure to be here today. And pardon me if I do get a little emotional, but Stan and I have worked together a long time. So just a little tidbit back to 2009, young Matt Case coming into Manatee County. And guess who Matt's boss was? This guy right here. We had, we have had so much fun over the years. Stan has been a mentor, an advisor, a subject matter expert, and not only that, a friend. And he has helped me so much in my career. We both have climbed the career ladder, climbing to the top and next top spot in Manatee County Government Fleet. We've worked very hard. He has been an integral part of us winning every award that we win, industry, setting the industry standard. And it truly has been an honor to work with him. It didn't matter if we were working COVID, pandemic, red tide, hurricanes. I could call him at seven in the morning, four in the afternoon, four in the morning, seven at night. Stan would answer the phone. So with that, I thank you for being a friend, and I really wish you well. Thank you. So with that, we also have several other members of staff who have worked with Stan in his 20-plus career here at Manatee County. I'll introduce Nick Delarosa, our interim Fleet Maintenance Operations Chief. Norm Hagel, Ops Chief, will follow behind him, and then we will open it up to the Stan Driggers Fan Club, who is here today to say thank you and goodbye. So Nick.
Good morning. Nicholas Delarosa, interim Fleet Maintenance Operations Chief. I would like to say for the last 20 years, it has truly been an honor, working for, working beside, and working with you. You have not only been a friend, a mentor, and an unforgettable coworker. I honestly believe that once you depart us, the name Stan the Man will echo through the shop bays at all of our shops. Thank you.
Good morning. Norman Hagel, Fleet Operations Chief. I've known Stan for about four years. I'm kind of the new kid on the block here. When I retired from the Marine Corps, the county was the first place that I started working. It's always a challenge when you're coming from the Marine Corps and you meet someone in the Army, because we always think that we're the best. And I can tell you this, I've leaned on Stan for lots of things. His knowledge in the field, his expertise at work, working with the people, and the guys that work for him underneath his charge. And one thing I can truly tell you about Stan Driggers is that he doesn't just care about what happens at work, he cares about what happens outside of work. If there's someone in need, or someone that works in his staff, he's the first person to volunteer himself after hours to help them out. And that takes a truly remarkable person to do that. So from one Marine to an Army soldier, thank you very much, Stan. It was a pleasure knowing you.
How you doing? My name's David Alligood. I'm a Fleet Maintenance Supervisor. Same as everybody else here, we've kind of all started underneath Stan and kind of worked our way up. We want to thank him for his service in the military. We want to thank him for his service here for Manatee County and Fleet Services, and all the lifelong friendships that he has made throughout the time. And as Nick said, we call him daddy. So Stan, we know you have, from your military time, quite a collection of coins. We want to make sure you depart with at least the Public Works Coin for the year, an add to that. But many, many happy years of full retirement. We want to see a lot of pictures of that boat on a lake, and just whatever that game cam shows me how you're raising your deer up north.
Well, Stan the Man?
I don't know where to start now. I just want to thank Manatee County for giving me the opportunity to work here. It's been a challenge, and we've prospered well here, shall we say. We've won about everything there is a win, multiple times. I also would like to thank for Manatee County sticking with me when I got run over by the car. It was, it was a tough time, but I appreciate it.
Commissioner Baugh. I'll throw you right in there for the emotional part.
Yeah, I know. Seems to be my day for that, but that's okay. Stan the Man. You know, you have been, in so many ways, a mentor to me, actually. You just didn't even know it. I don't think you knew it, but you have. And it's because you're always there. And I heard it mentioned before about anytime you'd answer the phone and so forth. You and I've had a lot of conversation, and it's meant a lot to me. You're very sincere, you're honest, you're truthful. And here's what I love the most about you. Your dedication and love of Manatee County has really shown. So I know you've been through a lot. I remember when you had, when you were hit by the car. I remember all that. It was horrible. And you know what? We're definitely going to miss you. And it's not, you know, every time that somebody leaves, or they retire, that makes it hard. It's people like you that makes it hard for all of us to say goodbye, because we've had the honor and the pleasure of knowing that you were here, no matter what. You were here, and you loved Manatee County, and you only thought for the best of Manatee County, what was best for the county as a whole. And you did everything that you could to make that even more memorable to the citizens. You're going to be missed, Stan. There aren't many like you. So I see your wife here, and I hope you guys have a lot of fun. I know you're moving. Thank you for giving me the information on my pool. You know, and I'll miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Ron, who, Stan, I'll warn you, is a Marine.
Yes. Stan, thank you so much for your service, not just to Manatee County, but to our United States Military as well. As a person that served in Desert Storm also, it was a lot of fun. We probably chewed up some of the same dirt together and some of the same sand together. But I appreciate your service, and thank you so much for what you've done for Manatee County, and the Fleet Department, and everything that you continue to do. And fair seas, my friend. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And yeah, I'll just close out by echoing Commissioner Ron's statement of thanking you for your service to our country and to our county. It seems like you spent your entire life in the service of your community, whatever you were doing. And it's another example, everybody, of how you never know who you're talking to, or who you're standing next to. You could be standing next to a man who was awarded a Bronze Star in Desert Storm, serving his country. So always be respectful of everybody that you're with and that you're surrounded by, because you don't know their story. Thank you so much, sir, for your service.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes the awards section of today's agenda. We are now going to move into proclamations. I'll read them all off real quick, just so you know the order. There are several of them, and then we will move for a motion. So proclamations are Child Abuse Prevention Month, followed by National Voice Day, followed by National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, followed by Sexual Assault Awareness, followed by Suncurstry Make Learning Days, and closed out with Commissioner Ron, World Tai Chi Qui Gong Day. Qui Gong Day, I apologize. It's a two-letter word. I would mispronounce it, in Manatee County. So we will entertain a motion to approve, we'll just do this verbally, entertain a motion to, oh, no, it's already on your screen. I apologize. A motion has been made to approve our proclamations by Commissioner Ballard, has been seconded by Commissioner Ron. We cast our votes at this time, as we don't hold public comment on proclamations. How do you vote on proclamations, Commissioner Ballard?
Okay.
Yes, okay. All right. So it passes unanimously by a vote of six to zero, with Commissioner Cruz absent. All right, then we are going to start with our first proclamation, which is Adoption and Presentation of Proclamation Designating April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Manatee County. And Commissioner Ballard will be reading the proclamation. Commissioner?
Well, I am very excited and proud to be presenting this proclamation today. It's extremely important for those of you who may not know, I spent my career prior to being elected to the County Commission as an attorney working in the child welfare system. So this is something that is very close to my heart, and extremely important to our community. So with that, I will go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas, Florida's future prosperity depends on our next generation. It is imperative that we do everything we can to nurture the healthy development of over 4 million children living, growing, and learning within our diverse communities. And whereas, child abuse is a crime that affects Manatee County with a rate of 1,102.8 per 100,000 children experiencing abuse compared to the statewide rate of only 539.9 per 100,000. Whereas, child abuse and neglect can cause severe, costly, and lifelong problems among society and victims, such as social, criminal, and academic difficulties, and emotional, physical, and mental health challenges. And whereas, individuals, businesses, schools, and community, and faith-based organizations must make children a top priority, and take action to support the emotional, social, physical, academic, and mental development and well-being of all children. And whereas, pinwheels for prevention, along with Manatee Children's Services, Department of Children and Families, Manatee County Sheriff's Office, Safe Children's Coalition, and other agencies work to prevent child abuse by promoting thriving families and healthy child development. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that April 2023 shall be known, designated, and set aside as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Manatee County, Florida. Adopted with a quorum present in voting this 11th day of April 2023, Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida.
Thank you so much.
I'm Kimberly Griffin. I am the supervisor for the Child Protection Team, and I just want to say thank you on behalf of Manatee Children's Services, this amazing village. We work together to prevent child abuse. So thank you so much.
Okay. National Voice Day is next. Who did we give that to? Mentioned not me's. It's okay. Commissioner Satcher will be presenting National Voice Day. And then after that, just, you know who's on deck, is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
All right. Is anyone here to accept this? Well, come on forward. Stand beside me. Proclamation from the Board of County Commissioners. Whereas, World Voice Day is celebrated every April 16th to increase public awareness of the importance of the voice and the impact of voice problems such as spasmodic dysphonia, which causes involuntary spasms in the muscles of the voice box or larynx, and causes the voice to break and have a tight, strained, or strangled sound. And whereas, there is currently no cure for SD. Research is focusing on treatments, including speech therapy and Botox injections into vocal cords. And whereas, given SD is designated as a rare condition, the medical community and first responders are uninformed and consequently unable to treat it, as it is neither a lung nor an anxiety issue. And whereas, we strengthen our resolve to educate first responders and our community to change their C, communication; O, opinions; P, perceptions; E, education. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that April 16th, 2023, shall be known, designated, and set aside as National Voice Day in Manatee County, Florida, to raise awareness and foster meaningful dialogue for ongoing opportunities to educate residents and the medical community about spasmodic dysphonia. Adopted with a quorum present in voting this 11th day of April 2023. Signed by the Chair, Kevin Van Austinbridge, and the Clerk of the Court, Angelina Coloneso.
Thank you, sir. Who is here to accept the proclamation?
Pat Simmons. I'm pregnant. I'm kind of confused, because that's the same one I submitted last year. And I wrote a different one for this year, but I don't know what happened to it. I have spasmodic dysphonia. Can you hold on just a second?
Yes, ma'am. And I'm sorry about the confusion on that. We'll check into it and find out what happened.
Thank you. I want to take you on a journey of a day in the life of a person like me. We all take our health and our voices for granted, and that they will always work up until the point where they don't. I was a part last week of a two-person panel at USF, talking to communication students. The other person on the panel and myself both agreed that it can be a very isolating condition. People don't want to talk with me. Some of the reactions that I get from people, one person said, oh, just tell your brain to stop it, and that'll work. Another person, I get this all the time, people ask me if I drive. Like, my voice somehow impedes my cognitive ability to drive. Sorry. My biggest challenge, I must say, with 911 people here, is talking on the phone. I get people that say, oh, you're breaking up. I can't hear you. It's not that my phone's breaking up. My voice is breaking up. When I was, when it was first noticed about five years ago on the other coast, my heart just sank. I knew what I was in for, because my maternal grandmother, my mom, and myself all have the same thing. I thought I knew what I was in for. I didn't have a clue. There's two treatments right now. One is speech therapy, which has helped me immensely with my breathing. And the other is Botox. Never, ever, never again. I need to put that on externally into your vocal cords. What should have taken five minutes took them an hour. And through all that, it didn't work. Why is it important to help with my breathing? Because I have what's called ATT, adductor spasmodic dysphonia respiratory. And what that means is that my vocal cords slam shut, and you breathe through your vocal cords. So sometimes I can't breathe in, talk at the same time. This keeps going out. I'm sorry. So I just want you, want to thank you for this proclamation. The National Spasmodic Dysphonia Association is dedicated to improving the lives of people with SD and related communication disorders through research, education, awareness, and support. All we want to be is included. That's the same thing everyone with a disability wants. So thank you again.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Don't step away just yet. Commissioner Baugh would like to speak. Ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted you to know that it's funny. I remember when you were here last year. You made quite an impact on me, and I have thought of you often. I have held you in my prayers. It's good to see you back here this year, and I hope to see you again next year.
Thank you.
Thank you for enduring and teaching others about the illness that you have.
That's my objective. I have to advocate for myself. So this is Gabby Gifford taught me something, when she said, mile by mile, it's a trial. Yard by yard, it's hard. Inch by inch, it's a cinch. So she's getting her voice back, and that's what I intend to do.
Good for you, ma'am. Thank you so much for coming in. Okay, next is Commissioner Baugh, who will be presenting National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in Manatee County. And I'm sure we have public safety here for that as well.
Down here. He wasn't coming. Down here. I wasn't going to do it until I knew you were down here. Wow. Chambers are going to be empty after y'all leave. Wow. I know, exactly. All right. So this is a real honor, National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week. Most people don't know what you guys do. It's not easy. It's a very tough, tough job, and you choose to do it every day. I don't know how you do it. Emotionally, I couldn't do it, but thank goodness you're there, and you do it. So whereas, the Congress of the United States has established the second full week of April each year as the National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week. And whereas, emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. When an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, firefighters, paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers, paramedics, and firefighters are dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained by, from citizens who contact the Manatee County Emergency Communications Center. Whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. They are a lifeline to emergency services by monitoring activity, providing information, and ensuring appropriate responses. And whereas, our public safety telecommunicators have exhibited compassion, understanding, yes, and professionalism during the performance of their duties in the past year. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that April 9th through the 15th, 2023, shall be known, designated, and set aside as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in Manatee County, Florida. Adopted with a quorum present in voting this 11th day of April 2023, signed by our Chairman, Kevin Van Austinbridge, and the Clerk of the Court, Angelina Coloneso. I will tell you from personal experience, one time I was at home, and this was last year, and there was a man at my front door trying to get in my home. And I was standing on the other side of the door, begging him to leave and go away. The only thing that kept me calm was you guys. I was on the phone with you the whole time this was going on. So God bless you, because mine was truly a minor thing compared to a lot of phone calls that you guys get. So who's going to accept this? Renee? I thought maybe.
I know Commissioner Baugh, and I'm sure that the double-barrel shotgun in her hand probably had her pretty calm as well.
He's right. I did have one.
But a calming voice helps.
Again, my name is Renee Temmelson. I'm the chief of the ECC. And I want to thank you, County Administrator, Chairman, Commissioners, County Attorney, and esteemed guests, for allowing me to say a few words on behalf of the telecommunications of the Manatee County. The nation has set aside the second week of April to honor public safety telecommunicators for their commitment, dedication, and sacrifice they demonstrate. But I want you to know that they do this all year long. They come in, they sacrifice going to a barbecue, or Easter, or when everyone else is celebrating, they're there to make sure that they answer the call every single time. And for that, I thank all of them for doing that. It makes a world of difference, and the world is a different place because of them. Thank you.
I'm interim Director Fisk. I think everyone knows when we have a large-scale emergency...
I think everyone knows when we have a large-scale emergency, we see everyone, lights flashing and parts moving outside. And I think that everyday emergencies, it's important to remember there is a conductor behind all of that chaos. And those are our telecommunicators. When you see the sirens and the rescue vehicles going, there's someone telling them where to go and they're giving them clear direction. And at the same time, they're on the other end of the phone with the person having the worst moments of their life. So I appreciate all of you. Thank you so much. Thank you for continuing to do what you do. And thank you for the recognition for our amazing team here today.
Yeah, you are sort of like behind the curtain, like the heroes behind the curtain. And when I, when I talk about Hurricane Ian, or when I did when we would go places and have, have talks and speeches and we would talk about the experience of the hurricane, I would always bring up the telecommunicators because that, during a storm, that has to be the most difficult job in the entire county. It's not an easy job, you know, Monday through Friday anyway. But when we are not responding to, you know, emergencies physically, we're still answering the phone. And, you know, now we have, everybody has cell phones, so the phones still work throughout the entire emergency. And the board has had conversations and we, we know what you all go through on a daily basis and we, we know what you went through, what you go through during a storm as well. And we, we appreciate everything that you do for everybody in this county. And the fact that people are reassured, even subliminally, they don't even realize it, but they're, they're reassured and calmed, knowing that all they have to do is press three buttons and they have help. And that's you. And everybody, without realizing it, everybody knows it. Administrator Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to echo what the chair's statements were, I just want to say on behalf of the county administration, your colleagues within Manatee County government, thank you, thank you, and thank you. If there is anything that this office can do with the direction of the board to help support Chief and further Baugh means make those known. Thank you so much.
All right. Next is Sexual Assault Awareness Day in Manatee County. Commissioner Bearden is presenting that one.
All right. So proclamation, Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida. Whereas, the theme of this year's Sexual Assault Awareness Day event is Shadows Brought to Light, Revealing Hope, Strength, and Healing from Silenced Stories. We invite the entire community to join us as we bring to light support and hope available to survivors of all ages. And whereas, every 68 seconds, an American is sexually assaulted. Every nine minutes, there is a claim of child sexual abuse. And in Florida, 41.8% of women and 20.4% of men have been victimized by sexual violence at some point in their lives. And whereas, sexual abuse occurs with all ages, including our most vulnerable community members. Around one in six people 60 years and older experience some form of abuse in community settings during the past year. And 34% of sexual abuse children are under the age of 12. And whereas, sexual assault is the most under-reported crime with only 37% of sex crimes reported to law enforcement. Victims need to know they have services available to them in our community, whether or not they choose to report, and regardless of immigration status. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that April 12th, 2023, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Sexual Assault Awareness Day in Manatee County, Florida. Adopted with a quorum present and voting this 11th day of April, 2023.
Who is here to accept? Is there anyone that's here to accept the proclamation?
Hello. I'm, I'm Teri Allen. I'm the trauma services manager at Centerstone at our Rape Crisis Center. I have the privilege of working with this entire team. They are the behind-the-scenes people and they don't want to come up to the microphone. They're, they're welcome to if they, if something, if they want to say something. But they answer the 24/7 helpline, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It is a cellphone that they keep on their hip. One of them has it on them right now. So if it were to ring, they would leave. They leave in the middle of the night, all hours of the day. It is this small team that is answering those calls to respond to victims in our county. Not only that, they then follow along with the victim who is now a survivor through the whole criminal justice process. Some of that involves many, many partners in Manatee County, like our Manatee Children's Services also, where we serve on child victims there and follow them all the way through the court system. Sometimes that does not occur. So having a day like Sexual Assault Awareness Day designated by the county is very, very important. It gives a time for voices to be heard that maybe never have been able to be spoken. That we know through the criminal justice process, sometimes it, it doesn't go any further than a report. Sometimes it never, ever gets disclosed. And so this is an opportunity where we have an art showcase and bring out artwork. This is our 22nd year of having this day, Awareness Day in Manatee County. And so artwork from all those years will be presented. This year's theme, Shadows Brought to Light, will be the theme and we will be holding it at 13th Avenue Dream Center over on 24th Street. And we welcome the whole community to come. The only way we can have prevention is by bringing awareness and talking about this very, very important issue that so many people just want to hush and, and keep it silenced. But the reality is, it does happen and this team knows very well and responds, so I'm thankful for them. But also the community supporting at awareness events like this will also benefit. So thank you. Thank you to Manatee County for acknowledging this day and proclaiming it Sexual Assault Awareness Day.
Hi, I'm Denny Stoltz. I'm actually one of the victim advocates with Centerstone Rape Crisis. I do have our flyers, so if anybody would like to attend tomorrow, it's from 4:00 to 7:00 at the 13th Ave, Dream Center. Thanks.
Chair. I just wanted to say a couple of words. Thank you. So I just want to thank you all so much for everything that you do, to have a dedicated rape crisis line that is there for survivors of sexual assault 24/7 whenever they need it. That is, that's something really amazing that we're able to offer to the community. To be there for people when they're, when they're in that extremely emotional and vulnerable place is, is a real service to the community and, and I thank you so much.
Thank you for being the volunteers in the community that you are. It's a very tough, tough thing. And I think, you know, it's amazing how we're hearing so much more about it these days than we did in the past. Can't do it without you guys. You are all angels. Thank you. Thank you. Next is Commissioner Van Ostenbridge. Presentation of, where is it? I know it's here. Oh. Suncoast Remake Learning Days in Manatee County.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Whereas the Patterson Foundation works to catalyze efforts towards shared aspirations, Remake Learning Days provides an opportunity for wide community participation across five sectors to work toward the greater good of strengthening our learning ecosystems. Remake Learning Days Across America is a 10-day festival that celebrates the many learning opportunities in a community. This celebration highlights innovative experiences and opportunities for youth and participants of all ages to develop their sense of creativity. And whereas, a variety of organizations open their doors to welcome families to host hands-on, relevant, and engaging educational experiences for youth of all ages and their families, caregivers, and educators, these events are free and wide community participation promoted. Whereas, Remake Learning Days provides exponential learning opportunities for families throughout the community. Learning isn't limited to the classroom or the school day. Rather, it's something that can happen in any place at any time. Whereas engaging children, parents, and families in a wide variety of learning activities outside of classroom hours and school buildings is a powerful way the community can create a learning ecosystem. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County that April 2023 shall be known, designated, and set aside as Suncoast Remake Learning Days in Manatee County. Adopted with a quorum present and voting this 11th day of April, 2023.
Yes ma'am?
Commissioners, thank you so much. My name is Beth Duda. I'm with the Patterson Foundation and I'm the director of the Suncoast Campaign for Grade Level Reading. We're very excited about Suncoast Remake Learning Days this year. We begin on April 21st and currently across our four-county footprint, we have 206 free events happening for parents and children to experience hands-on learning with over 295 partners that are working with the Patterson Foundation to make this festival a reality. For the first year, Remake Learning Days has gone international. There will be Remake Learning Days festivals in Uruguay, Great Britain, and New Zealand. And I'm proud to say that our festival is going to be the largest one in the world. So thank you for this recognition and the honor and we appreciate your support.
All right. Next, Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. It's a great day here in Manatee County and I get to do the World Tai Chi and Kuai Gong Day proclamation. So proclamation to Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida. Whereas, World Tai Chi and Kuai Gong Day is celebrated in hundreds of cities in 80 nations every year on the last Saturday in April. And Manatee County has hosted a World Tai Chi Day event for the past seven years. And whereas Tai Chi and Kuai Gong are traditional Chinese exercises of mindful, relaxed movements found to benefit the health of people of all ages and fitness and many fitness levels. And whereas, numerous studies have shown the benefits of Tai Chi and Kuai Gong for relieving stress, improving balance, and coordination, especially among the elderly, and improving the behavior of adolescents with the tition deficit and hyperactivity disorders. And whereas, medical research has also shown that Tai Chi and Kuai Gong is beneficial in reducing stress and tension, which we could use some of that, in increasing the immune system, improving cardiovascular function, increasing muscle tone, bone density, improving flexibility, and improving general health and well-being. As whereas, Manatee County will be hosting a free event at JT Bray Park to celebrate World Tai Chi Day, bringing people together to learn more about Tai Chi and Kuai Gong through this day, though this day of celebration and practice that will occur around the world on Saturday, April 29th, 2023. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that April 29th, 2023, 2023, shall be known and designated and set aside as World Tai Chi Day in Manatee County, Florida. Adopted with a present court and voting the 11th day of April, 2023. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. And now Commissioners, Commissioner Ron will demonstrate Tai Chi.
No, I'd like to see somebody do it.
We, we saved this for you, sir.
Well, if you ever want to join, we would love to have you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Melissa Nell. I am the program manager and registered herbalist for Cypress Pillar Healing Arts. And I'm actually here for the organizer of World Tai Chi Day, Dr. Brian Nell, who couldn't be here because he's teaching Tai Chi. So I just wanted to say thank you all so much. We so appreciate the partnership that we have with the board, also with Molly and the Sports and Leisure Department, and Charlie and Aiden in the Natural Resources Department for being able to do not just this event, but having classes Mondays and Thursdays at JT Bray, if you all aren't too busy. And also at Robinson Preserve once a month. This fitness, it's really, this, actually, the event in Manatee County is one of the largest in the state of Florida. We typically average between 100 and 200 people. It's broadcast live on Facebook as well as Zoom and we have people from all over the world attending our event. We are really proud that this year, Manatee County is the official music for World Tai Chi Day because Dr. Brian also is a musician and creates the music. So our county is representing the world internationally with the music for the entire event. So every year, Manatee County once again stands as a representative in the world. And it's just really fantastic that you all partner up. We have teachers from all over Manatee and Sarasota County come to volunteer their time and lead this program every, the last Saturday of every April. This year, it'll be April 29th from 9:00 to 11:00. So thank you all so much. We deeply appreciate your partnership and we'll see you next year.
Yes ma'am, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on then to, oh, we, they pulled the vote back up, Commissioner Cruz, since you are here. If you want to vote on, you don't have it? No, we'll stick with the 6 to 0 that we had before then. Okay. Then we'll move on to citizen comment on future agenda items with a 30-minute cap. I don't think that much of a problem, but you never know. Is there anyone who would like to come forward for citizen comment to speak on an item that is not on today's consent agenda? I have four people signed up. Just a moment, all. Deena Saboo, Mike Meehan, Erin, I'm not sure how to pronounce that last name, and then Shannon Keever. So you'll have three minutes to speak on an item that is not on today's agenda but is likely to appear on a future agenda or you would like to appear on a future agenda before this board. Ma'am, when you get to the microphone, please state your first name, your last name, your county of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
Deena Sabo, Manatee County. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here today to thank Commissioner Cruz for spearheading the conversation last month regarding the dog shelter. I'm here today to remind all of you that the volunteers advocating for the change at the shelter are not the adversaries of you. I'm here today as a volunteer to honor my agreement that I signed when I became a volunteer at the shelter, which was to do no harm to the dogs. In my heartfelt opinion, failing to speak up would be allowing the dogs to stay in harm's way. It is harm's way, in my opinion, when a dog only gets out of a kennel once a day, which has occurred twice in the last 10 days. It is also harm's way when all the dogs routinely are in their kennel for 18-plus hours in a row. I am here to expand your perspective regarding the question asked by Commissioner Ron last month regarding the average stay of the dogs. I appreciated the question and I wanted to go on record that, that data can be skewed and looking at it from a little bit different perspective would gain, would give everyone a further idea of what's going on with the dogs. So the 44 days, which is what the answer was given to you, that included cats and it also eliminated blockhead dogs as they skew the average. So currently today, we have 36 dogs far beyond the average 44 stay. Roughly 31% of the shelter population is exceeding a six-month stay. Indigo, a beautiful girl, has called the shelter home since January of 2022. Betty Luna McTofu have called the shelter home since 2021. Quest, Molly, Winter, Kane, Birdie, Whitney, Dex, Tahoe, Roxy, and Cybe, Flan, Rosie, Prince, Mandolin, Clemmons, Jenna, Titan, Tony, Roman Moon, Nina, Chuck, Addie, Griffin, Murray, Hammy, and Max since 2022. I am here to thank Mr. Washington and Mr. Cruz for visiting the shelter. On days when we have important visitors or TV crews, management comes out of their offices to help to help on the shelter floor. They mop, they do dishes, they spray essential oils. This change in daily behavior shows all of us that they can do more and know they should be doing more. So please come daily as it appears things get done, when there is accountability. Thank you, Mr. Austenbridge, for requiring a follow-up break. Before we go on break, thank you so much for asking for them to come back and do a follow-up. This situation didn't get the way it is today overnight. We're all aware that it's a dire situation, and if we all continue to oversee and manage it, I think that we're on the track to changing things in the better for the dogs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well timed. First and last name, county of residence, sir, and you'll have three minutes to address the board on a future agenda item.
I'd like to have this.
He has an item for the overhead projector. There you go, sir.
There we go. Hope you can read it. Mike Meehan, Manatee County. I have two potential solutions to the large fiscal '22 budget surplus that was reported by the Clerk's Office last week. But before discussing them, I would like to state that the fiscal '22 surplus came in at $281.4 million. That's this number right here. The '22 surplus is equal to 95% of the property taxes collected in fiscal '22. Furthermore, there is the potential for fiscal '23 surplus to be the same or larger as the negative mark-to-market of the county's cash investments of $1.5 billion approaches maturity and also benefits from higher interest rate earnings. This swing could generate as much as $60 million additional dollars when compared to the negative $4.6 million of interest income reported for fiscal '22. One solution is to consider levying only non-homestead properties, which would cut property tax collection in half, but still result in a substantial surplus for fiscal '24 if expenditures increase less than 3% as they did in fiscal '22. A second solution is to consider a variable property tax credit, which I have proposed to the Commission several times over the last couple of years. Take 50% of the average five-year surplus, which is $174.5 million, and apply it to the upcoming fiscal '24 property tax bill for a reduction in overall property taxes of $87.2 million or $379 for the average property tax-paying household in Manatee County. Forget the inadequate millage cuts of the past. The large fiscal surpluses of the past several years prove they don't make much difference. Let's take a major step towards solving a very serious imbalance in Manatee County's property tax regimen. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Erin, I'm not, people butcher my last name regularly, so I'll allow you to state your first and last name and your county of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
Erin Fruhoff, Manatee County. Today, I wanted to make a public comment about the problem of cigarette butts on our public beaches. Cigarette butts pose a threat to our environment, our local economy, public health and safety, and can detract from the natural beauty of our public spaces. Cigarette butts are the most collected items in beach cleanup efforts, which are both costly in time and money. These filters or butts are composed of cellulose acetate, which is difficult to degrade biologically and remains in our environment for years. As a result, this type of litter poses significant threat to our public health and natural environment. While casinos, clubs, and bars may be appropriate locations for smoking, beaches are not. Beaches and parks, unlike casinos, clubs, and bars, are a common location for children to visit with their families. Beaches are also the most visited natural areas in the United States, and beachgoers want clean sand and water for most. If a beach is polluted, beachgoers may go to other cleaner beaches, and so the problem has an effect on our tourism-driven economy. It also proves extremely difficult to remove cigarette butts from beaches. Current mechanical cleaning practices are not very efficient at picking up small-sized litter and also have a negative effect on bird and turtle nesting. The screen used by most beach sweepers does not retain a high percentage of cigarette butts, and if more dense screens are used, more sand is retained and the waste management costs increase. Before I continue, I wanted to acknowledge the previous efforts by their local government in performing and collaborating on regular beach cleanups, helping educate the public on the harmful effects of cigarettes and their filters, providing locations to properly dispose of cigarette butts, and issuing fines to litterers. However, this has not been enough to address the problem. In June 2022, House Bill 105 was approved by Governor Ron DeSantis, allowing regulation of smoking by counties and municipalities and parks and public beaches. An ordinance to restrict smoking is the cheapest among proposed solutions, and research from a litter audit and observational survey indicates smoking ordinance can reduce smoking even if it can't eliminate it. In Sarasota County, a community very similar to our own, a smoking ban resulted in a marked reduction of cigarette butts on beaches, and I was hoping that you would all would consider a smoking ban similar to the one adopted by Holmes Beach in efforts to reduce cigarette litter. And I strongly urge you all to consider the effects these butts have on our children, our economy, and our environment. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Shannon Keever. And then after Shannon Keever, if there's anyone who did not sign up who would like to come forward to speak for public comment, we'll open it up to the audience. So Ms. Keever, please state your first name, your last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to address the board on a future agenda item.
Good morning. My name is Shannon Keever, and I live in the city of Bradenton. I am here because I am asking that you bring in the call, you bring back the call-in feature for citizen comment. It was very, very popular. I know that it was initially initiated because of the COVID pandemic, but it was utilized a lot and is a good way for you to get to hear from your constituents who are unable to make it to the county meetings. I know that some of you have been offering town halls, and I appreciate that, and I'd like to see more of that, but I just think in order for you to hear more from your constituents that the call-in feature is also a pertinent, sorry, a pertinent feature also because it happens during the county meetings and it becomes part of public record. Also, my daughter is here in the back. She was too shy to come and speak, but she wanted me to mention that she has been noticing more and more unhoused people in Manatee County, and she has a really big heart for people in need, and she wants you all to consider how we can help unhoused people get homes. And she would also like to work with you all. Oh, here she is. So, did you have anything else you wanted to say about that? No? Okay. But that was something really important, and she wanted me to tell you that. Please, thank you. All right.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone who did not sign up but would like to come forward to speak on a future agenda item at this time? Anyone from the audience who would like to address the board on a future agenda item? Okay, seeing no one, we're going to close citizen comment on future agenda items, and we will move on to consent. So I removed item number 10. Didn't quite realize I was doing that. I should have done it when I asked if anyone wanted to remove anything. So I did remove item number 10 from consent. So we'll entertain motions on the consent agenda minus item number 10. So we have a motion by Commissioner Ron to approve consent minus item 10, seconded by Commissioner Ballard. We will open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on an item on today's consent agenda excluding item number 10? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close citizen comment on consent, and we can hold the vote, and there's no one on the board to speak, so we'll hold the vote now. Consent minus 10 passes unanimously, Madam Clerk, by a vote of seven to zero. All right. Moving right along then. It's 10:13. We do our 10:30 break, so let's go ahead and do item number 31, which is Advertise Public Hearing Presentation Upon Request. It's Property Management. Adoption of Resolution R-23-032 Vacating a Portion of Applied Drainage and Utility Easement Located at 908 72nd Street Northwest, Bradenton, Florida 34209, District 3. We're entertaining motions. Motion has been made by Commissioner Cruz to approve item number 31, and has been seconded by Commissioner Satcher. We'll open item number 31 up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on item number 31 on today's agenda? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment, and we'll move forward with the vote. There's no one on the board for discussion. We're voting now. And Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Thank you, Property Management. You did a great job. Moving on to Development Services, this is also a presentation upon request. Item number 32 is Approval of a Gap Funding Loan Request for NDC Construction Company on behalf of 920 Manatee Associates LLC for 920 Manatee, the project, and authorize the county administrator to subsequently execute an Affordable Workforce Housing Project Loan Term Letter with NDC Construction Company on behalf of 920 Manatee Associates LLC for 920 Manatee, the project, and is located in District 3. Would anyone like a presentation?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Okay, we would like a presentation, and we have questions. Who is here from staff? She's scrambling, so this should be good.
Well, that's all right. I do have information about the project, so I can tell you a little bit about this. So NDC is...
First and last name for the record, please.
Courtney DePaul, Deputy County Administrator. Good morning. So NDC is, has come to Manatee County requesting gap funding in the amount of $1.9 million, and that is in the form of a loan that is a 10-year payback period. They are doing 137 apartments at 120% affordability of the AMI. So it's 100% of the units are 120% AMI. And actually, it's based on the AMI in 2019. So it actually is less than what the AMI would be today, and that is what the project is about. So I'm here to answer questions that you have specifically about it. I know that we've all been briefed. So we've also got Scott Rudisil here, who's acting on behalf of the, of NDC.
Okay, we have, Commissioner Cruz is on the board. Sir?
Yeah, I'm always someone who pushes for these gap financing things, but I do have a couple of questions. In part, I went through this loan letter, and it seems like there were either pages missing or were being given a short form. Usually, when you see, whether it's a term sheet or formal loan documents, I know we've moved to documents, when you have defined terms, you have a section that defines the terms. I mean, there's a lot of capitalized words in here that are seemingly meaningless until you have a better handle on exactly what you're implying. So I have a couple of questions. Number one, you define superior mortgage lenders relative to, by definition, if I'm using regular words, not defined, because I don't have the defined terms. Superior means that they're in place ahead of us. They're superior to our loan in terms of both payment on a monthly basis and repayment on the back end. But you list as a superior mortgage lenders are expected to be ANICO Life Insurance, owner capital, and third-party equity investors. Owner capital and third-party equity investors are capitalized terms, meaning that those are defined somewhere. No loan on, no loan on the planet has owner capital and third-party equity investors superior to a loan, whether you're senior loan, or second loan, or third loan, or mez loan. You're not subordinate to owner's capital and equity investors, but that's how I read this note. How am I reading that incorrectly?
Can you speak to the position?
I don't care. Who answers?
I know. It's so weird.
Can everyone hear me?
There's a red light at the base. That's to come on.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rowena Young Gopee. I am the Affordable Housing Development Coordinator and staff.
Can you speak to, address this question first, then we'll go forward. You asked him about the loan position, the loan terms.
Okay, so the loan position basically is a subordinate loan due to the fact that they already have a closed loan that they're working with?
I get that it'll be subordinate to the senior from the life insurance, but by, by the way this note, this loan letter is written, and I get it, it's not a legal document, but we're still approving you to create legal documents in accordance with this note effectively. This doesn't say we're subordinate to ANICO Life Insurance. It implies we're subordinate to ANICO Life Insurance, owner capital, and third-party equity investors. That's the sentence. We are not subordinate to owner capital and third-party equity investors.
Those are the sources of their loans? So no, we're supporting it to ANICO.
Okay, that's not how this note's written.
And that's just a draft, so we're going to flush that out and make the changes.
I just want to make sure when the final documents come through and we see them, that we're not spinning our wheels here under some assumption that, because I've seen it before, where you've got $10 million worth of equity, but they treat it as a note, and then they make it, they try to make it superior to, to an outsized lender, and that always gets pushed back. I want to make sure that's not happening here.
Correct.
Second thing, because I want to make sure, let's be honest here, I love our gap financing, but our gap financing traditionally is for affordable units, and part of our liberal Manatee and everything else we've always done was kind of 80% and below for monetary, 80 to 120, in our minds, switched just to density bonus situation. So while we're giving them money, we're not really giving them money. We're effectively becoming a bank to make a market rate-type loan, obviously very below market relative to interest rate, but we're not giving them anything. Like, unlike some of the others, like when we did Onico and it was 17 years out, I have no intention of realistically most likely getting that money back. It's 17 years out, it's subordinate to like three different other sources of actual superior financing. This is a different story. This is a loan. This is not affordable based on those definitions. This isn't using the same credit, you know, 4% credits and 9%.
Correct.
It's not sub 80%, it's not 100%. This is a request where we're going to get some reasonable level of affordability here for some reasonable period of time, and there's a gap, and they're asking us to effectively be the bank, not be the grantor of funding. So I want to make sure this makes sense. And only 25% are affordable. My question is, again, you define a term that's not in here of affordability period, capitalized affordability period, but it doesn't define affordability period. My understanding is the laura that was signed with the city of Bradenton or else, or whomever, is only, what, eight years or something like that?
There's not a laura. It is a development agreement.
Okay, whatever, whatever the case is, however we define it.
And it is 12 years, and the city of Bradenton piggybacked off of what the county actually initiated.
Understood. I, at no point, whatever the affordability period is relative to whatever agreement was previously signed, it was signed prior to us putting $1.9 million into the deal. One, I'd honestly like to see it longer if we're coming in, but if it's not going to be longer and we're not going to open that in discussion, at no point in time do I want this loan outstanding with a single dollar of outstanding basis with that affordability period ending. So at a minimum, we as a county using taxpayer dollars are not going to have outstanding exposure to a market-rate property. That's not what we do with our taxpayer dollars. This is to facilitate affordable workforce housing. So at the very least, that either the term of this is going to have to state no more than 10, you know, 10 years, but no later than the end of the affordability period, or conversely, the development agreement has to state that the development agreement affordability ends on a certain date, but no earlier than the full satisfaction of this particular note, because we're going to need that affordability while this money's outstanding. I can't have $1.9 million still outstanding for 10 years on a market-rate property.
I do understand your concern.
Commissioner Cruz, do you mind if I dialogue with you on that?
Sure.
Okay, so I understand where you're going with it, and on principle, I don't necessarily disagree with you, but my concern is there's, I believe Rowena said that there's, there's a loan that has already been executed, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this applicant has already executed the majority of their financing.
Understood.
But that's based on, the laurel's part of that agreement, I'm sure, right? That's, that's an understood aspect and contingency of it. They can't change, I mean, maybe they can, but it's probably going to create a major problem for them to then change the duration of that. You see what I'm saying?
Okay, then that's...
Already executed a loan.
Then that's fine, but we can do that without affecting the senior loan, because instead, you don't have to, I told you, it was an either-or option. It doesn't have to be, change the development agreement, which, which I get, was probably collateral on the senior loan that's already executed, so that's a non-issue. You can't go back and redo that, but you can still make sure our loan is structured to say that our maturity date expires at the end of whatever affordability period.
Yes.
Want to shorten the, our term?
I want to hear, my concern is just, we're providing a term of a loan, like, I don't know, because we have no information. I don't know what the, what the maturity date is of that senior. If that maturity date is 30 years from now, then this whole document's worthless, they're not going to let us get paid off. worthless. They're not going to let us get paid off first. We don't have any of this information. I'm just being given something, saying, here's a short-term affordability period on this property. Again, I love the property. I love gap financing. I'm one hundred percent on board with doing this, this loan. I just want to make sure the loan's structured properly for the taxpayers, because this is a little different than other things, and I know other people watch this. I already had some other developers like, like out in the lobby, like waiting to see what this conversation was. It's a popular product, especially with inflation and issues getting bank financing. I want to make sure we're structuring these properly and not doing something out of the ordinary for, for one person that we're then effectively obligated to do to a second person. I just want to make sure these are structured properly. And again, if this is gap financing for affordable workforce housing, I want to make sure it's affordable workforce housing. I don't know how to structure. I'm not an attorney. I didn't pass the bar. I'm just saying, I'd like the product that we have, two million dollars nearly, of taxpayer dollars to still be affordable while the taxpayers have two million dollars of exposure on it. That's all I'm saying. I don't know if there's a way of structuring that or not. That's just my preference for the sake of using these dollars wisely with the limited amount of dollars we have to do this gap financing.
To understand.
And Scott's behind you. Maybe he has a solution.
And just to be clear, eight years from now, we're not going to have 1.9 million in exposure, right?
Why?
Well-
There's no dollars of our principal that's ever going to be allowed to get paid down while a life insurance company is sitting in front of us. We'll get our, we'll get our interest, but we're still going to have 1.9 million dollars.
Right, you will collect your interest. Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners, for the record. I'm Scott Rudisil. I'm here on behalf of the applicant's Nine Twenty Manatee Associates on this project, which is a great project, by the way. And I appreciate you recognizing that this is a little bit different. This is not, you know, you all see regularly these forgivable loans that are, they're structured as a loan, but really they're intended to be forgiven. That's not the case here. This is a loan that will be repaid, and the applicant has no problem with adjusting the affordability period to the extent necessary to make it line up with the maturity date of the loan. So.
All right. Commissioner Satcher has removed himself from the board. Commissioner Bearden is now on the board. Commissioner Bearden?
So, where is this, where are we getting this money to loan? What, which, which account is it coming from?
Staff has identified the subsidy account, the Affordable Housing subsidy account, as this funding source for this loan.
How much money do we have in that account?
In that account currently, we have 3.8 million.
Okay. So, what's the loan? What's 1.9? What do we expect it for that account to grow in the next three to five years?
That, that's my next. So, that, based on the work session that the commission had, there is no additional funds. It's earmarked to that account per se. However, it's the board's discretion when surplus lands come up. The board can decide whether or not the funding, you know, the money that is made when we sell a county property goes into that account. But as of now, that 3.8 million, as it dwindles down, will not be replenished.
Are we sure we want to do that with this? I mean, what's the interest rate that we're going to get in return on that loan?
The interest rate that we're suggesting is based on the applicable federal rate for the IRS, which we've used for several other loans, which is 1.75 or fifty percent of the, the FR.
Fifty percent.
It's 2.075, which is fifty percent.
The floor is two percent, though. On this particular note, at least based on the letter I received, it said the, the greater of fifty percent of the federal funding rate or two percent, not 1.75 we increased.
Right, we did a revision because we wanted to keep it based on what we've done before and leave that to the board.
A revision since the note I'm approving right now?
It's just a draft.
And so, how is that term paid back? Is it going to be like every year? I mean, is it a monthly thing? I mean, what, how are those terms, that loan term being paid back?
Based on the draft currently, it is interest only for the first two years following CO of the project, and then to conversion, which is the next eight years. And they go out to maturity of 2034, then they would pay the remaining principal and interest back at that point.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Satcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, in some of my conversations, the, the term we were talking about was seven years, but now I'm here in ten years. So, I'm sure that's just, you know, a misunderstanding, but I'd like that explained. And I think that this whole, you know, this being on the agenda, us having this conversation, does point to the fact that we need a standardized procedure for how we do this. I would much rather have, I don't believe I'm about to say this sentence, but similar to land use, where the applicant kind of gives us the, you know, the setting, and then the staff, you know, fills in any blanks that they feel like should have been filled in. And then just another, so another question that I would like cleared up is, or maybe it's just something for the board to know, is from, from some conversations that I've had, it seems like this is kind of, in a way, a project where we are, for lack of a better term, pot-committed. You know, we had a property that the county owned that before any of our times, except for Commissioner Baugh, was, you know, earmarked for this purpose. And the purpose in this case is not making affordable with a capital A, but workforce-type housing, which seems like an appropriate area for something like that, right downtown? And, you know, if I was in that eighty percent to one-twenty percent of AMI, if that was, you know, my income bracket and didn't have a bunch of children that want room to run and play, it might be a neat option for me, and I know that Bradenton seems to be on board. So, but we have, you know, that land, as far as what we sold it for, you know, with that in mind, does kind of put us at a spot where, you know, I think we're all better on, better off if this project goes forward. So, I just wanted to bring those points up. But I do hope in the future that we get a standardized procedure, you know, for, for projects like this moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Cruz and Bearden is the speaking order.
I'll just point out, I've been trying to get us to have a standardized procedure to move forward with gap financing inclusive of funding sources for six months, a year now. So, I'm glad to hear that. Hopefully, we do put together a formal process so we can start moving these forward in a more streamlined manner, so people know what we can and can't offer, and it's not one-off every single time. So, I agree with you.
To answer Commissioner Satcher's question regarding to the seven years, this seven years is just based on the development agreement. However, the loan is based on the way that we loan and present the law itself. Manatee County's law is based on, anything comes after CO.
So, we updated the term to ten.
So, we updated the term to ten, and this is what we spoke with the clients about for the loan purpose.
Okay. So, conversations I've had that said seven years, that's, that's been updated to ten. I should just lay those conversations aside, correct? That's okay.
Yes, so there's a development agreement that was signed in 2020 that was for twelve years. That would take us to 2032 typically. But if this loan document is executed and the board approves it today, then it would be a ten-year term. So, that would actually be ten years from CO, which is expected in '24. So, that would take it out to 2034 with the affordability period. This loan extends the affordability period. The loan agreement would.
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Bearden, and then Mr. Clegg.
So, what would be the amount that we would get in two years on the interest only? Do you know that number?
The interest calculated for the entire 1.9 would be around 20,000, 25,000.
Okay. So, what have we done with this money in the past? Like, we had over three million, right, in it? I mean, what are some examples that we've done with this money?
Well, this money is scheduled for mainly the livable manatee program and anything that comes in for affordable housing that are not in the TIF.
So, we'll have, what, roughly a million dollars left in that account after this loan is, is executed?
One and a half.
One and a half?
About that.
Okay, okay. All right. That's all I have. Thanks.
Unless you want to sell some surplus property and put that money in there. Mr. Clegg?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure it's clear. This agenda item, the board is not approving a loan document today.
No.
There is a commitment letter in there that says those have to come back to the board along with a budgeting decision to appropriate revenues, because this has not been reviewed by my office at this point.
Correct.
So, I'm okay with the language that's in there, but when you said they're going to approve the loan document today, that gave, okay. I want to make sure the board understands that. This will come back to you, so you will see the specific terms before the county is legally committed to lending this money.
Yes.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Baugh?
I wasn't going to ask any questions, but Mr. Clegg just made me stop and think. Why has this not been run by your office? I didn't think anything was supposed to come forward like this without going to the county attorney's office for approval.
I'm not sure I'm the right person to ask that question.
You're the county attorney. Well, why go to ask?
No, but I don't, they make decisions about when to run things by my office. There's a whole lot of stuff that doesn't go by my office. But the, the commitment letter is a form that I crafted back when we started getting into this, that does require the actual legally binding documents to come back to the board, and those do get reviewed by the county attorney's office. So, from my standpoint, as long as it's clear the board is not making a legally binding commitment today to lend this money, I'm okay with that. But I do think the board needs to know. I haven't seen it up until this point, other than the discussions in the briefings and when it showed up on the agenda.
If I could dialogue, Mr. Clegg, I just want to make sure I understood something you just said. We're not making a commitment today, is that what you said?
You're not making the legally binding commitment to lend the money until you approve the loan documents. You've sent them a commitment letter that has contingencies in it. And I built some pretty strong contingencies in there. When we crafted a form for this last fall, one of them is that the board has to budget revenues to fund the loan. We haven't done that yet. The staff has identified a revenue source, but the board hasn't made the decision to budget that money to the loan. The other is to have a complete package of binding loan documents that come to the board for approval by resolution. That's the only legal way the board can actually lend the money. This is basically a, I mean, a commitment letter is something that banks use to say, we will give you this financing, but it's subject to these final terms being worked out in legally binding documents.
So, that's basically what we're doing today?
That's all you're doing today. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. We'll open this up to public comment. There's no one on the board to speak at this time. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on item number thirty-two on today's agenda? Sir, please state your first and last name, your county of residence. We have three minutes to speak on item thirty-two.
Thank you. I'm Scott Rudisil. I'm a Manatee County resident. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I just want to clarify, because some of the stuff, you know, we're just seeing this commitment letter yesterday as well. So, some of the terms are a little bit different, I think, than what had been proposed and discussed. We just want to make sure there's enough flexibility in there that we're approving this conceptually when we come back with loan documents, that we can work through some of the, the timing issues and affordability period and things like that, that, that are in that document.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to speak on item number thirty-two? Sir, please state your first and last name, your county of residence. We have three minutes.
Hi, Ron Allen. I'm a Manatee County resident. I just want to clarify, I'm the developer for this project, and I just want to somewhat clarify, when we originally submitted the application, we, we have a remaining about eight years left or seven years left in our loan with Anico, which is the, the senior lender in this project. Our original request to the county was that we have a repayment mechanism of those loans at the end. So, we either do it at sale of the project or refinancing. So, we knew what that date was. I think the county has come back and said, to be consistent with what our systems are, we're going to propose a ten-year. As a, as the developer, we're totally fine with moving that number back if the shorter period is what is anticipated or is, is wanted by the commission. And so, we figured those things would be worked out in the final document when we get finished with the final legal documents that then would go to Mr. Clegg's office to review. So, we're sort of caught up in this discussion where I think we're talking about different timeframes, but we're much comfortable, more comfortable with the shorter timeframe than the longer timeframe. We just think this is imperative for the success of the project, and we'd like to have your commitment to, for the gap funding so that we can continue the process of getting the legal documents corrected. And Commissioner Satcher, when I explained the seven years to you, that was prior to me receiving the documents yesterday. So, I don't, I didn't know that we had gone to a ten-year period, and that's no fault of the county staff. It's just a matter of, we were trying to work through this, and we just had different mindsets of what that completion or maturity date was. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward for public comment? Okay, seeing no one, we're going to close public comment, and we have two commissioners on the board to speak. Before we vote, Commissioner Ron and Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. This is for staff. I got a quick question for you. I want to clear up something that Commissioner Bearden asked you about, what the interest payment would be over the timeframe, and you said 20,000. Is that correct? I mean, that, I mean, because I'm calculating a little bit different, and I'm counting like-
It's forty, like 40,000 for the interest rate based on it's-
Well, let me do some math with you. 1.9 million at four and an eighth percent, interest only per year turns out to be 78,375 dollars.
Oh, it's two percent?
It's two, oh, it's two percent?
Two percent.
Okay. There's a rate in there of four and an eighth?
It's half of that four.
Okay, all right. Sorry, my, my bad. Cut that in half.
Will do.
So, it'd be about 40,000.
Thank you. I had four and an eighth. Sorry about that.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah, just, just to clarify what Mr. Allen said. Yeah, so effectively, this is a seven-year term. I mean, you shouldn't care if it's a ten-year term in real life, because presumably, there's no prepayment penalty. We're not locking in the yield maintenance or defeats and something. So, you'll be able to pay it back, and the reality is you will, because if you go to refinance, no new senior's going to sit there with a, with a three-year remaining term left on a subordinate piece. They're going to ask you to take it out. And if you go to sell it, presumably, we're going to have assignment rights that, that we're going to want to get paid off as condition of sale. So, the reality is, it's a seven-year loan term, not a ten-year loan term. But it does give you flexibility. If you need extensions with, with the life company, then we're basically giving you some free flexibility and free extensions. I can change it to seven years and put three one-year extensions on there for a point each, if you want. But I think, I think the ten-year with an open prepayment gets you actually more flexibility, and odds are, we can probably underwrite, pretty high confidence, we'd be out in seven years.
All right, thank you, sir. There are no other commissioners on the board at this time. We've held public comment. We can cast our votes now. He put himself on after we started conducting the vote. So, he will, I will go to him as soon as the vote is concluded.
I love this group.
All right, so the vote passes unanimously, Madam Clerk, by a vote of seven to zero. Commissioner Satcher, sir, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, who's made the motion?
I apologize. The motion was made by Commissioner Cruz, and the motion was seconded by Commissioner Van Austinbridge, and it passed unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Commissioner Satcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, just for public watching, I just wanted to catch them up, and I was hoping at some point in the proceeding, some, some of the things that I learned behind the scenes have come forward. But just overall, you know, this is a property that before my time on the board was already committed for this purpose and at, you know, really, it was a commitment from the county. So, a resource, an asset. And, and then the project looks like it's going to be a good project. This is a short term, and in this world of, you know, commercial finance, a relatively smaller amount of money. But I think that, I, I think that we have the votes and the commitment here that as we move forward, I would like to see some standardized procedure. It makes sense to me that the applicant would make a, a presentation on what they're, why they're coming to us, and then staff would fill in any blanks if, if commissioners need someone that doesn't have a dog in the fight to fill in some of the information behind it. I would feel better about our votes in the future doing that. But in this one, I did get a lot of my questions answered behind the scenes, and so I look forward to seeing a successful project here in downtown Bradenton and working together in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clegg?
Yeah, I just, Mr. Chair, I would just add to Commissioner Satcher's remarks, that is also the advice of the county attorney's office, that we do need to get a procedure in place so that we can do this through some objective criteria.
Commissioner Bearden?
Regarding those stip-
Regarding those stipulations, can we get a timeline on when we can get those done and executed? What do you guys think? Three months to be able to have something in place for that? For the, for the policy that we want to create?
I defer to the county attorney and the applicant to sort that out. I don't get into those negotiations.
We provided them with an example that our bond counsel gave us from South Florida that's a template that we can work off of to put something like that in place, which just needs to be kind of adapted to Manatee County and the way we're handling it, and then brought forward to the board for consideration.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, excuse me, Administrator Washington.
Commissioner Bearden, just for clarification, you meant the process of how we do it. No, it won't take three months. Staff at the last work session has already begun to work on that, so I would say in the next less than 30 days, we would have the framework for that.
Commissioner Baugh.
Just one comment. I'm not for gap funding. Y'all all know this. I'm not changing that. I did vote today because I think, you know, we, we're committed. However, in the future, I would ask that no more gap funding come forward until there is a procedure in place. We can't keep taking individual projects one at a time and trying to figure out what we're doing. It's unprofessional. It doesn't look good for the county to do it that way. It's been mentioned several times, so please, you know, work with the county attorney's office to get this lined up so that we have the same procedure and we're consistent going forward. That's all I'd say. Thank you.
Well, you've gotten them going now. There was no one on the board. Now the order is Bearden, Satcher, and Van Austinbridge. Commissioner Bearden.
I'm with you, Commissioner Baugh, because, I mean, the last one that came across, I mean, obviously, I wasn't in favor of. This one kind of appeared a little bit different than the last one, and so that's why I was a little bit more favorable with this one. But, you know, I'm definitely not a fan of gap funding. I just, I don't think this, that's the right thing to do. However, you know, there is, this is an opportunity for workforce housing, so I wanted to, you know, with, with what was being stated here, it looked like a good opportunity, but just in the future, just so people know, I'm not in favor of gap funding, so I don't want to continue to see these come across my desk, because most likely, you know, I will not vote for them, so.
Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just on the, on the record, I want to say that as we set those parameters, everyone needs to be involved, because there's definitely, there's a spectrum of, you know, viewpoints on this particular item. When I say everyone, I mean each commissioner, so I'll try not to call names, I'll try not to call names, but, but some commissioners may want a whole lot of affordability, a whole lot of units, and some commissioners may want, you know, 10% affordable, so that you're, it's different philosophies. And so we need some way of being able to look and see, okay, does this line up? Are there, is there enough ROI on the other side of things to make this a worthwhile project so that each person can, you know, can cast their vote with confidence? And then if there is no room for that, you know, if this type of a program has no room for some of the people that have serious, you know, reservations, which, you know, I think I'm on that list, you know, then I guess we could go forward with that, but it may not have the votes, may never get votes after this one, or, and so especially as we get farther out from COVID. That changed a lot of people's, you know, a lot of people that were in the middle of construction projects and had things worked out financing, but it changed, you know, during COVID because of the inflation and things beyond, you know, this commission's control. But we're getting farther and farther out from that, and so we would expect people to, to make the proper calculations of businesses. They need to make the, the proper calculations to put that, bake it into the proposals. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. I'm last on the board, and I'm glad to hear so many of you saying that you're not going to support future gap funding projects. I feel that, and I have said, you know, pretty consistently, that I feel that because of the situation that we're in with our economy right now and the sort of crisis mode that we're in when it comes to affordable housing at the moment, that we should continue to judge each project on its merit and sort of go project by project. I do not feel that we should create a program that is, let's be honest, based on government giveaways that will never end. Government giveaway programs do not end, and I'm going to be very disappointed in this board if we create a program that is going to be infinite and that is going to be based on giving taxpayer dollars away forever. That is not what I thought we were about, so I'll be disappointed if we do create that program. I understand where the county attorney is coming from. I hear his advice. I thank him for his advice. I do that a lot. Doesn't mean I follow it. But, but, and it's his job. His job is to, you know, sort of look out for a flank, and he's doing that, and I appreciate that. But the goalposts inevitably will shift, you know, these, these projects will work their way through these, the criteria that are set out, and then when it lands on your desk, Commissioner Bearden, you're the jerk for not voting for a project that has met all of the qualifications and the stipulations that have been set out by the board, and now it's here and you're just supposed to rubber stamp it, and you're, we're setting ourselves up for failure, right? We're setting ourselves up for a program that's never going to go away to be endless government giveaways. That's my concern, and I see I've excited everyone. Commissioner Baugh, you're next on the board.
You're dead again. Hey, notice that time, people. He did it, not me.
I always excite you.
No, you don't. Not at all. You know, I, I think the chairman is correct. You know, this is a very conservative board. We need to act like it. You know, we have land that, you know, is to be surplus, and that's what we had originally talked about, was selling our surplus land for affordable housing, not taking taxpayer dollars and putting it toward gap funding. And there are some projects that are better than others, and I totally get it. I mean, I agree, and I realize that, you know, we're in a crisis. But you know what? The homes aren't going to be built today or tomorrow. I mean, they're under construction, but it's not, they're not going to be move-in ready tomorrow. And the bottom line is, is that we have to remember that and realize that we can't, you know, fix the world overnight. So the bottom line is, we need to figure out who we are, who we want to be when we grow up and start acting like it and doing the best we can do, and I think that's what we're trying to do. You know, because we can't just make decisions today that we're not going to have results for, for probably almost a year, you know, and that's, and that's just the way it is. So I would say to this county, and when I say county, I mean, you know, to me, the county commission is the county, so to speak, and if we're going to make decisions on this type of thing, we need to, one, have a procedure. I mean, we got to have a procedure. Number two, you know, if it's the will of the board, as the chair said, to keep looking at projects and figuring out what we're going to do with each individual one, then have the procedure in place. If we're not, we're not going to approve any more gap funding, then say so and stop it and look, you know, we've had plenty of time to put surplus property on the map and try to sell it. What have we been doing? We're too busy looking at gap funding. Now, I realize, and I'm not talking about what's here today, but, you know, I'm talking about in the future, let's figure out who we are when we grow up and, and try to, to get there. And I'm not disagreeing with anything that I've heard from anyone here today. I'm just saying that we need to... This board is very shy a lot of times about saying yes or no on decisions that need to be made, and, you know, we have to. Yeah, this board. So, you know, we, we've got to figure it out and, and decide. So I, I think this is a good project that's coming forward. I'm impressed. I mean, we're not going to be waiting, you know, like some of the others that we've done where it's 20, 30 years. You know, that, that chokes me up to think about that, because that's not what the taxpayer, you know, is looking for. So anyway, let's just figure it out and move forward, make a decision. If we're going to do the gap funding, then, you know, fix the procedure and do it. If we're not, sell some surplus land and get it rolling. Make a decision. Thank you.
Commissioner Bearden, then we'll go to the administrator and the county attorney.
So then I'd like to make a motion.
Here we go.
I didn't mean to cause trouble here.
Help me out with this, Attorney Clegg. So my motion is whether or not we're going to approve or disapprove gap funding in the future. So how could I, how could I frame that to where I say that we don't approve gap funding from this point forward?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bearden, you could just make a motion that we're no longer going to do any gap funding, and the board could adopt that motion. My concern is that what's happened is when individual applicants come back and request gap funding, they can always come back and ask, and then the board could make exceptions later. So, and I'm kind of getting into what I was hoping to have a chance to say before the board took any action, which is that the, the procedure that we found through our bond counsel basically says, it doesn't create a program, and I understand your concern about that, Mr. Chairman. It simply says, if the board makes the decision to make some money available for gap funding, then this is the process that people will have to follow to ask for it. But unless and until the board does that, there's no gap funding.
Okay.
So if somebody wanted to come in, I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir, but if somebody wanted to, to ask for it, they'd have to first ask the board to allocate some money to gap funding before they could even ask to get to the step that we're at today. And that keeps the discretion in the hands of the board. Are we going to do this at all? My concern is if you are going to do it, you certainly don't have to, then you need to have some objective criteria, because at some point, you're going to have one that you're going to say, no, this is not something we want to fund, and you, you need to be able to point to that criteria in order to be on legally firm ground. So what I would respectfully suggest, Commissioner Bearden, is if you want to move this forward, to simply direct staff and the county attorney's office to prepare a procedure for the board to evaluate gap funding requests if and when it is, it decides to provide money to do so. And if we, if we are having trouble with getting that together, we can always ask Prag to help us do that, because they'll, they'll be happy to draft it for us if we're, if we're having difficulty getting it done.
We did, I mean, that, that motion is fine. We've been working on this, at least process, so to speak, not a program, but a process.
Yeah, that's all we're looking for.
Just doing, as you say, Prag has been consulting with us on it, and we've, I think we've had some informal discussions with the county attorney's office, but I think we're almost at the point that we're ready to submit it to the county attorney for full review, so we're getting very close. I think one of the questions that we've got is, do we continue to bring the projects forward before that process is in place? And, and I know that I'd, I had heard a couple comments about that, and that's really one of the...
Maybe that's the motion that addresses Commissioner Bearden's concern, directing staff not to bring forward any more gap funding projects until the board has approved a procedure for reviewing those. Does that address your concern, Commissioner Bearden?
Didn't sound like what he was saying. Didn't sound like what he was saying to me, but...
It's good, though.
That basically means you won't be doing any more unless and until the board approves a procedure that allows you to consider more applications.
Do we want to open this up continuously in the future for gap funding on projects? I don't necessarily think I want it, want that to happen, right? So if Commissioner Ballard would like to dialogue with me, go ahead.
Commissioner Ballard, you're on the board.
Thank you. So I, I agree with Commissioner Van Austinbridge. I agree with Commissioner Baugh. However, I don't believe that creating a process to, to get gap funding to the board creates a, an unending program that is going to ensure that, you know, these gap funding requests are never ending, because I, I agree. I think that this is a time-limited thing. I think we're in a very unusual financial circumstance due to, to COVID, supply chain difficulties, inflation, all of those things, so I understand that there is that short-term need. But I also, I agree with the county attorney that we have to have a process, because at some point, there is going to be a project that's going to come forward that we're not going to want to approve. It's, it's just going to be a bad deal for the county or whatever it is, and we're going to have to look at, we're going to have to be able to point to some objective criteria as to why we are not wanting to fund a certain project. It can't just, it can't just look capricious.
It cannot. I'm sorry to interrupt you. It's litigious stuff. I mean, it's federal court stuff, so we really do have to have a procedure if we're going to be able to say no at some point.
Or we just get out of the game altogether like Commissioner Bearden is proposing.
Yeah.
If it's that much of a problem, you're going to sue me because we didn't give you free money.
Yeah.
Piss off.
When have we...
That's what I say.
When have we start, when did we start gap funding?
We received our first request in July of '22, and then the first one was actually approved by the board. I think it was dated December 15th of '22.
So we've literally been in this game less than a year.
Correct.
Wow.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, then, from this point forward, I want to make a motion that we deny or don't even move forward with any gap funding from this point forward.
Second. Second. So the motion by Commissioner Bearden is seconded by Commissioner Satcher to no longer move, to, to get the county out of the gap funding game. How do you want to word that, Commissioner, or, excuse me, Mr. Clegg?
I would like to word that to say that the county, we moved to direct staff to not consider any more applications for gap funding from this point forward. That means...
Commissioner Bearden? Do you agree to that amended motion? Commissioner Satcher?
Yes.
Okay.
So what that means is if somebody else comes in, before they can ask staff to review something, they're going to have to come back to this board and ask you to change that standing direction. They can always come and ask, but unless and until they do, staff shouldn't be working on requests for gap funding, because that's the direction the board is giving you.
And in disclosure, we have one that is currently under review with staff now, and so that one would be affected by this, but that's absolutely fine.
Yes, it would.
That's true. Commissioner Ron.
Just to make this clear, we are stopping all gap funding for eternity or just until the procedure goes in place? The way the motion is worded, eternity. Okay.
I do need to change on the board. It has Satcher having made the motion, Bearden having seconded. I need y'all to remove those and then redo them real quick for me.
Jason made the motion.
Yeah, it should be that Jason made it. So you have to, you have to retract your motion, Commissioner Satcher. Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Perfect, never mind. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, so we have the motion is by Bearden and the second is by Satcher. We'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on the motion on the floor? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment, and we'll move forward with the vote as there's no one on the board for discussion. Yeah, talk about getting it under the wire. So it passes by a vote of six to one with Commissioner Cruz in opposition, and Commissioner Cruz is on the board. Sir?
Yeah, just be careful speaking in absolutes. It seems like we do that a lot. It's a lot of, we're never doing this, we're never doing that, never show me this. There's never, never when it comes to government. I mean, based on this resolution that, that we're passing, someone may come in the door saying, I'm about to build you 1,000 units from $400,000. Sorry, sorry, we literally said nev... I, I think it's, it's short-sighted to say never. It would have been better to allow them to continue the process. They already started, which is putting together a program for this, and you could have made that program as onerous as humanly possible when we all sat down and agreed to that policy. It could have been 100, we'd only look at gap if it's 100% affordable housing, if it's, if it's 100% below 60. You could have made it so, the hurdle so high to qualify for it, and you would have accomplished a goal of catching those few things. To make absolutes that at no point in time, I mean, who's to say the definition of gap financing doesn't start, start broadening out? I mean, we do waive things that aren't part of our standard process. We say, oh, don't worry about trees, don't worry about impact fees, don't worry about permitting fees. At what point in time does somebody dictate that those are gap financing as opposed to standard practice? I just don't like speaking in absolutes. I don't disagree that we need to have a policy. I don't disagree that that policy should make sure we're only seeing the best of the opportunities because we don't have a funding source. But I don't like the system where we just say, matter of fact, throw everything in the garbage, never present it to us, because you never know when we're going to find a really good opportunity for this community.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Baugh.
Yeah, I just, I was listening to Commissioner Cruz when I was in the back, and he's right. However, the one thing that you learn about local government is what is done today can change tomorrow. So nothing is ever forever in local government. We've seen this. I've seen it the whole time I've been on the board. So it could change. We'll have to see, you know, later on down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. No one else is on the board. That concludes item number 32. And when we were, and most of the regular agenda, when we return from our recess, we will take up item number 33 and start the Commissioner Agenda Items portion. We're in recess for 10 minutes.
You know, that is amazing that we--
Okay, welcome back, everyone. We have completed the vast majority of today's regular agenda, and we are now to Commissioner Agenda items, and we will go Baugh, Ron, Satcher, and Van Austin Bridge. We'll start with Commissioner Baugh. Item number 33, Authorization to Send a Letter of Support to Governor DeSantis Backing the Move Florida Forward Infrastructure Initiative. Commissioner Baugh.
Commissioner Baugh. Commissioner Baugh, please put on your microphone.
Okay.
Thank you.
I didn't want anybody hearing me yet, I wasn't ready. I had a meeting last week, as you know, I was in Tallahassee, and I met with Secretary Perdue, and I also had a meeting with Fiona McFarland. To make a long story short, you know, the governor had asked for $7 billion in funding for moving Florida forward for infrastructure, and so far, the House and the Senate have both only, they're at $2 billion apiece. So, you know, it looks like that they're going to get $2 billion instead of $7 billion. So DOT asked that we, or that I try to get as many letters, et cetera, done to the governor and to our legislators to let them know how important this is, because with the growth that we all hear about every day, and, you know, the problem with that is that what it does, it hits us with infrastructure pretty hard. And we're, here in Manatee County, we're doing a great job. We're really taking it, you know, the bull by the horns and trying to get something done. But the state as a whole needs to do that as well. And it's, I don't know where it's going to end up this year, but I went ahead and drafted a letter. I would like for you all to let me know, do you all individually want to sign the letter? Or do you want just the chair? And I would like to sign it as Vice Chair and Chair of the NPOAC, you know, to take this to DeSantis, but I needed to bring it forward to all of you to get your thoughts and opinions and how you'd like to move forward. So that is the first thing on my list, so I'd love to hear from you. Okay, it's already got a motion and a second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ron to approve the letter, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bearden. No one is on the board for comments, so we'll go to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on item number 33 on today's agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close comment. There's no one on the board for discussion. We'll hold the vote now.
Just a sec, sorry.
Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Commissioner Ballard.
So, I do, I do think it's important, I would like to see all Commissioners sign the letter and really throw our support behind it. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, I was wondering.
Thank you, ma'am. I have to sign the letter, since I'm the chair, but I hope that everyone else will sign it as well.
We do.
Okay. Your microphones are still on, ladies. We're gonna, okay, Commissioner Baugh, you still have the floor.
I'm not done. The other thing I've not put on the agenda, but I think we need to have a discussion about HR. You know, this board discussed while back about the thought of looking outside for, I'm going to be very careful what I say here. We had talked before about getting perhaps an independent agency to come forward and take over HR, and I think we're at the point that we probably need to do that, so I'd like discussion, and then I plan on making a motion to ask the county attorney to move forward with, with looking at independent agencies to come in and basically take over, I'm sorry? You know, to look at handling HR, I think it's at the point we need to move forward pretty quickly, and, because HR is probably, in my opinion, the most important department that we have in the county, because they all deal, you know, HR deals with all of our staff and trying to make sure that things are done properly and professionally, and it's a very important agency. So, you know, I am going to make that motion, but I wanted to hear from the board to get your thoughts. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The speaking order is Cruz, Van Austin Bridge, Satcher, and Bearden. Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, since this came up the first time, I also spoke to the county attorney about, I mean, we, at a minimum, at a minimum, we clearly need to fix how we're handling HR. It's, it's, it's been a problem, HR is too important, we have over 2,000 employees here. For whatever inexplicable reason, HR got moved to the only floor in this building that now is locked down, so any employee needs to, like, key card themselves in and acknowledge they're going to see HR, which kind of defeats a lot of the purpose of HR, honestly. So at a minimum, we need to be looking at our HR policies and fixing it for the good of the staff and the employees of Manatee County. But I'm also open to the discussion about third party, and I did speak to the county attorney about it. And the reason is, sometimes the problems employees have are directly related to their director, or even in cases, the county administrator, and the HR falls under these positions. They fall under a deputy county minister, they fall under a county minister. Having a fully unbiased third-party HR oversee things where people feel open to speak to them about issues they may have without any feel of repercussion, I think is, is important. So I'm not, I'm not against it, I had asked what other counties have this, what other structures are put in place. I'm sure that'll come back when, when information comes back to us based upon this motion. But I'm certainly open to the discussion, because I do think it'll make things better for our employees, and a lot of that HR work isn't something that has to be quote-unquote "county-related." A lot of it's, you know, basic, just complaints people have or information they need, and that can be handled by a third party without anyone feeling like they're being looked over or held back. So I'm on board with this.
Thank you, sir. I'm next on the board. To be honest, Commissioner Cruz didn't leave me much to add. I thought you think you really said it well. The only thing that I would add to that maybe is like that the devil's in the details, so I'm definitely supportive of moving forward with, let's say, outsourcing HR, but the devil's in the details, so I want to see, you know, briefings for us, obviously, on what that would look like. And I think there's, I say potential, you know, one of the main driving forces to me would be shrinking government, providing a better service to our, our employees, and cost savings as well for taxpayers. So Satcher, Bearden, excuse me, Satcher's off. Satcher, are you up?
Satcher came up.
Okay. Bearden?
No, I mean.
Oh, my goodness. Bearden, Bearden, Baugh, and Ballard.
No, I, you know, I, I understand how it could be beneficial to look at outsourcing HR for the simple fact that there's not a bias there at any point in time, as well as, you know, this is a very important department, probably, I would think, the most important department in the county, right? From a liability standpoint. So I would like to look at outsourcing HR, I think it runs more both proficient and efficient in order to, one, cut costs, two, again, there won't be a bias there in the way that they approach things. And there are just a lot of things that we need to do in HR, and we need to do it pretty quickly, I would, I would think. So I definitely would be in favor at looking at third-party companies coming from, working with ADP. At one point in my life, I understand HR, and I understand from a third-party standpoint how that could be very beneficial to us as a county, so that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Baugh.
Oh.
It's you, then Ballard, there was a goof up on the board.
Oh.
Unless you want her to just go first.
No, I'd rather hear from the Commissioners first.
Commissioner Ballard.
So I, I too am interested in seeing HR potentially outsourced. I have expressed concerns on a few occasions about some of our HR policies, some of our HR trainings, and so I do think that we have some, some significant issues that, that need to be remedied, and I would echo the, the comments of, of other Commissioners who would like to see someone who's not, not, of a program who's not going to be biased, who's truly going to be independent. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too am supportive of this, this motion when it's made by Commissioner Baugh. HR should be a safe place for employees and not feel that if they do something, that there's going to be retaliation or condemnation by HR because of what they're bringing forward. My one question is, is that once, if we were to move forward, county attorney goes through the process, or the administrator goes through the process, do we send us out to procurement? And they do, they source out other, you know, HR companies, or is that something that, I'm just asking that question, how that works?
Well, that comes back to the devil's in the details, but why don't, why don't we go to the attorney for that?
I was going to put myself on the board and address that, so a couple of points. One, Florida statute's very clear that the Board of County Commissioners is the governing board of Manatee County Government and does have the authority to decide how to organize that government and how to organize its departments and its various activities. Two, we have a purchasing ordinance that we have to follow, particularly in an area like this where it touches on a lot of different legal aspects within the county. So if the board does want to go forward with this, my suggestion for a motion would be I move that the county procure independent contracting services for human resources activities with the understanding that that's going to have to go through our, our procurement process and be brought back to the board. I don't know specifically how that's going to work, whether that's going to be a sole source or an RFP or something else. I'm not in a position to be able to give you any.
You're not in a position to say that?
Yes, ma'am, that's exactly right.
Commissioner Baugh, it's your motion, your, the mic's not on, but it's, it's your motion.
Well, no motion's been made yet, but that was.
Can I ask, I want to make sure I understood it. The, the companies would come back to this board, is that correct?
Typically, in our, our purchasing process, that's exactly right.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Commissioner Bearden.
I also would like us, when, you know, obviously, we're going to vote on this today, but get us a consultant.
Sure.
In regards to, you know, going through this process.
I got, okay.
Just to, as a, you know, so that we know as we go through this, that, that, you know, we're, we're getting the best deal possible that's out there if we decide to move forward with this.
Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just for clarification purposes, I'm just making sure that I understand we're looking at outsourcing the entire HR department or portions of the HR department.
My understanding would be that that's something that you and Mr. Clegg would work on with a consultant, which Commissioner Baugh sounds like she wants to be involved in selecting a consultant.
And, Mr. Chair, could I add to that, to your?
Yes, sir.
So I think that would have to come back to the board for a decision, because just in doing some anecdotal research on this, some functions are more easily outsourced than others, particularly if you look in the corporate world, there are some things that they, that are sort of more paper pushing functions that are easily outsourced and others that are more sensitive. So definitively, they haven't made a decision on that at this point, they're just asking us to initiate the process and bring it back to them.
Understood.
Okay.
And, and one thing that, obviously, whoever a third party is, they're going to require employees. So just from my personal standpoint, I would like a priority to be put on, if, if it's going to mean a reduction in employees, of county employees, that those employees be offered sort of first opportunity to work for the third party so that they, you know, to ensure some stability and employment for them. Bearden and Baugh are on the board, and I have sort of a glitch here, so I'm not really sure who's first, but Commissioner Bearden, you go ahead.
Okay. No, I, I can, I can say that larger corporations do obviously outsource their, their HR department as well as implement payroll in, which is a whole lot more smoother process. People like Bank of America, big, bigger corporations that are definitely makes this process for the employees a whole lot smoother, it's a whole lot easier to access HR and things of that nature. So, yeah, I think that's some great points that the attorney made.
Commissioner Baugh, and then Commissioner Satcher, unless you'd like him to go first.
Commissioner Satcher, you haven't spoken.
I think she wants to go last, I'm noticing that, so Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, I would just like to see, you know, and this is just a consideration as, as y'all work on this, for us to, rather than force a company to, you know, do something that could limit our options, limit companies how interested they're in, and change what kind of offers we get, rather, I'd like to see us, as a county, prioritize trying to reassign some of those positions, because if, I understand that in the county itself, we have open positions that someone that's skilled at solving problems can, can train and fit in. So not necessarily requiring, but, but I would like to see that as opposed to making the companies making that part of the RFQ. Thank you.
Yeah, I like that better. Thank you for rearticulating and restating that. Commissioner Baugh.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate hearing all the comments from the board members, and I kind of knew from previous conversation how most of us felt. You know, as far as a consultant, I know that there was a report done, a consultant came in and looked at HR, and I think that Lee Williams sent it, Washington sent it to all of us, and I've read it thoroughly and looked at it, and I would ask, if you don't see it, please let Dana, my aide, know, and we'll make sure that all the Commissioners have it so that you can read it. It's pretty involved. I, I think, you know, I'm not recommending that we have, you know, a company come in to take over payroll and everything else, I'm not saying that. What I am saying is we can look at everything. I think we should look at everything. I think this board needs to, to come in at this point in time and look at these things. You know, right now, we're sitting with an interim county administrator, and we have a lot of new staff members throughout the county, and we need to make sure that any policies that are being changed, this board is aware, and we want to see those changes. It's not up to anybody else, it should be up to this board. I have realized and been told that there has been some decisions made on changing such as things, it's Florida statute about at-will employees. I found out yesterday that's been changed. We now, our position on at-will employees, it seems, changed as of April 1st. Now, I didn't know anything about it, I don't know if any of you did, but I hadn't heard anything about it, so policy is being changed. There's been a lot of other things that's been changed in other departments that we know nothing about. So until we get, and I think that our interim has, has really tried to do a great job with everything that he's been hit with, and he's been hit with a lot, but obviously, as an interim, he needs to look at the board, you know, for guidance on, on how we want things to go. It's not up to anybody else, it's up to this board, truly, because we have to keep a finger on the pulse right now as to what's happening. So I, I think that we need to get this done with, with HR as soon as we can. I do think it's probably the most important department in the county, and it has been lagging for a long time, and there's been many, many issues that have transpired. I start losing my voice now, not, don't fail me, voice. You know, to the point that I know, I've had many conversations with the county attorney, and the county attorney's been very concerned about anything that might be coming forward to hit the county because of decisions that have been made. So we've got to get our finger on the pulse and say, no more. This can't happen anymore unless the board knows about it and is okay with it, because if we don't, we're not going to know the county we're in. So that is one of the main reasons I'm bringing this forward. I, I'm not going to go into personnel, per se, in HR, but, but I would think, and I would hope, that our staff members in HR, you know, when, when we have the outside company that comes in, I would want them to, to look at our employees that are in HR to make a determination as to whether or not they think they should stay in HR or whatever. But I by no means am doing this to get rid of, of any staff members in HR. I think, you know, you're only as good as your leadership, and, and so we need to realize that. And ultimately, we are the leaders, so it's up to us to make sure that we do just that and, and look at this department and make sure that good, solid decisions are being made by the company coming in. So with that note, did you, oh my goodness, it's piled up again, never mind.
Can I dialogue with Commissioner Baugh real quick?
Yes, ma'am, sir.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. Since this is such a huge item for us, and I try not to make these meetings any longer, I've, I've often wondered why HR is not a item on the agenda. You have Developmental Services, we have Community and Veteran Services, we have Public Works, we have everything else that falls under the privy of the board, why is, I'm just asking if that's something that can be added to our agenda as an HR update or report, this point going forward, once we've done whatever we're going to do with, with regards to HR.
Yeah, that's a good question. Mr. Washington is next on the board, so why don't we go to him? Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I think that would be an easy fix to Commissioner Ron's question if the board so desires, but just want to offer some clarification of policies being changed. The policy hasn't changed, the process in which we apply the policy related to progressive discipline. At-will employees and employees who are in probationary status for years have been let go for whatever reason, because it was believed that you didn't need to have a reason to let an at-will employee go, and yeah, there's some language that speaks to that. But one of the things that I had hoped to achieve when taking over the interim role was to calm the waters of Manatee County Government and its employment, employment status. So I made it clear to the directors that in order to have any employee dismissed, they need to make sure that they've done their due diligence in identifying those deficiencies with those employees and outlining a plan to correct those deficiencies. Obviously, there are certain circumstances where employees do certain things that you have to discharge them, and I think we all understand that. But just to let an employee go because you disagree with what they did or they made a mistake, I don't believe, based on the money that we spent with bringing them onboard, the salaries that we've been paying them, and the job descriptions that we've given them to do certain work for Manatee County's residents, made much sense at all to let them go because we disagreed. So there was no policy change, but how it was applied per our current personnel policy was a memo and change that I asked our directors to take onboard. Thank you.
You still have the floor, actually, Commissioner Baugh.
Oh, good, okay. And thank you, Mr. Washington, for your thoughts on that. The only thing that I would say is that, number one, it's, it's Florida statute. Number two, ultimately, this board knew nothing about it. And this board needs to be told those things. If something's changing as far as our employees and procedures, this board needs to be aware. So, and I didn't, I didn't say that you had done that, I, I just said I knew it, the policy had been changed. And I think that's where part of the issue is coming in. It seems to me, I mean, you come in my office, and I look at you, and I go, so, Mr. Washington, what's happening in the county? Fill me in. Well, nothing really, same old thing. You know, the board needs to be aware, we can't, you know, we get held responsible for anything going on in this county, whether it's anything that we had something to do with or not, because it stops here at the top. And, and so we're the top. So I would just say that, you know, any policy decisions regarding employees, anything along that line, this board needs to be aware. You know, so that if the press calls us on something, we know what it is and what's going on and how to respond. You know, you can't have full authority, because you do have seven Commissioners here that takes the heat for anything and everything that takes place. That's all I'm saying. It is a problem, and we've got to get back, you know, this board basically runs the show. And then, Mr. Washington, you're there, and, and you are to run the county, and you're, you're to do that with the guidance of the board, and that goes to the HR director and all the directors in all the departments. So we just, we just need to be in, and I knew it was an HR thing, not you, per se, that took place. So, and I know there's been other things as well. You know, departments, there shouldn't be any changes done in the county without us being aware. We have to be aware, and that's not what we've been seeing. So I, I'm, I'm just bringing that up, but it is a problem, and we need to get that corrected. That's all I'll say right now.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And I was made aware of the change yesterday, and I did speak to Mr. Washington one-on-one and, you know, explained to him how I felt about it. Commissioner Bearden and Commissioner Ron are next. Commissioner Bearden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I, I, this is the first I've heard of this, this change that was actually made, and I think that's an issue in regards to, you know, things moving forward, because another thing, discrepancies that I, that I saw was that our job descriptions and our policy, after having done a deep investigation through the HR department, that we needed to ensure that was in place. And to me, that should be the number one priority of our HR director, is ensuring that those proper procedures and those job descriptions are in place, because if not, then things can tend to happen in a way that could affect the county negative. So I just want to ensure moving forward that things like this, like this April 1st change that was in the county, that, that we know about what, what's happening, because honestly, this is the first I've ever heard of, of this actual change. I just, moving forward, I really want to make sure that, you know, everybody is in the know, every board member that's up here is in the know, because, you know, coming from the Marine Corps, we do have a chain of command, and, you know, and information needs to be passed up to the chain of command if they're at the top, right? Because information is so important. Information gives us the ability to manage what needs to be managed for the county, for the citizens of this county, of what they the citizens of this county, of what they want, not what we want, but what they want. So, you know, anything, any changes like that, especially regarding HR or any department, I want to ensure that every single one of the commissioners know about this moving forward.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ron, did you want your remove from the schedule here from the speaking order? Commissioner Ball.
I just want to add, and thank you, Commissioner Bearden, for your comments. They were right on. I have received recently, I don't know about the other commissioners, I can't speak to them, but I actually, there was a phone call that came in on my county phone that my aide received. It was a recording. We still have it, and it was complaining about our HR department, pretty much in detail. And I did receive another one from an employee here in Manatee County. They didn't give me their name. I've actually received two or three where they, one did give their name, actually, but at any rate, you know, where they're calling and telling us, we've got problems, you know, we need to address it. The one that I had, I did let Mr. Washington hear one that I had received, and, you know, I let him hear it, and he told me not to worry about it. I told, I asked him, I said, what do you want me to do with this? You know, I don't know what to do with it. And he told me not to worry about it, so I'm sure that he's probably addressed it. But these things keep happening, and it happens more and more and more. So as the eldest commissioner on this board, which means I'm the oldest, I did it because I knew you'd say it.
You called it.
Well, you know what? It is what it is, right? So the bottom line is, I'm sorry, what?
What?
You know, it needs to be addressed, and it's not being. I've had several conversations about HR with the county, interim county administrator. You know, we cannot continue with this. We have to take care of these issues. So I don't really have anything else. We have a motion and a second on the floor, and I think we've pretty much covered it. The concerns are there, and we've got to handle this as a board, and this board is the ones that need to handle this.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. So we have a motion by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Satcher. Mr. County Attorney, would you like to, or I should actually ask the clerk if you could read back the motion to us, just so we're sure you have what we think we're voting on.
Motion framed by the county attorney.
Yeah, so that comes right back to me. So the motion was?
I can go, Robin.
It's all right. I've got it. It's all right.
No, it's well done, Robin. I like that.
That's Robin.
Just pass that right off to him.
A lot of things seem to go like that.
Make the big bucks, sir.
I move that the county procure independent contracting services for human resources activities. We do need to take public comment.
We're going to, but I just wanted to clarify that for the clerk first. Now, you did not have in your motion that that would come, that those agencies would come back before the board for a vote.
Purchasing ordinance would require them to, but if you'd like to add that and say that.
It's required, that's fine.
We do.
No, you want to?
Let it in there.
The motioner would.
Get it in there.
All right, so then we can add to that. We can, I'll rephrase it. I move that the county procure independent contracting services for human resources activities to be presented to and approved by the board.
Motioner agrees?
Yes.
Commissioner Satcher, do you agree as a seconder?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're going to open this to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on the motion on the floor? No one has signed up, so please state your first name, your last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to speak on the motion on the floor.
I have a couple more after this.
My name is Craig Fisher, Manta County resident. So a lot of tension going on right now, so I'm kind of.
Yes, sir.
So Ball, you mentioned some voicemails that you received. So what I've really learned here is what are these complaints? You know?
Sir, your microphone. Turn your mic on.
Can I get my time back? Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, bump them back up to three minutes. Yeah, go ahead.
So, all right, so there's a lot of.
Your name again, sir?
Craig Fisher, Manta County resident. So there's a lot of tension going on right now, so we've received some voicemails. These are employees, obviously, it's probably on a county-recorded line or county voicemail or something like that. I'd like to know what's going on here, because apparently, you know, Ball, you have some issues with some employees, I guess, got fired or something. I don't know. You guys got to be less vague and kind of let this constituents know. Well, Ball, you're shaking your head like you don't know what's going on here. I don't either. So can you guys be a little bit more clear of what's going on here, because you guys are just talking around, and now we're going to have an outside firm be our HR? So, you know, you guys are making a pretty big change here. Can you guys be less vague and kind of explain what's going on, what the HR issue is? Is it finances? Is it employee issues? What are those issues? Let our constituents know, because if you guys have, you know, a big change like this, we kind of need to know. So stop talking around things, kind of let us know what's going on. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward for public comment? Yes, ma'am. So first name, last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to speak on the motion on the floor.
Oh, I don't know if I have three minutes of thoughts. I just have one thought. Okay, my name is Holly Kennedy, and I live in Manatee County, and I've never attended one of these meetings before. I have, but, and I appreciate all of your input and hard work that you do on behalf of the county. What comes to mind is I have absolutely no idea what all the personnel issues are and human resources, so I won't comment on that. That is primarily, most likely confidential information. However, it comes as a great shock, particularly because so many of you have said this is the most important department in your county management, that it's not on the agenda. And I agree with Honorable Mr. Ron, who made the comment regarding the fact that such an incredibly viable, important part of county government isn't actually on the agenda. And if, in fact, I was trying to oversee the people who are tasked with managing and operating county government, you're the oversight board, I would have expected it to be on the agenda and for Honorable Ball to please ask all the questions. Someone came up and gave an entire presentation on gap funding. All of the experts were here. You were able to ask an awful lot of questions, and the public, as well as everyone here, was able to understand the issues and follow along your reasoning and decision-making regarding gap funding and going forward and accountability to taxpayers. None of that is happening under this discussion, and you have 2,000 employees that this is going to impact. And I just think that from a good governance standpoint, and if I was sitting where you were, I would have wanted a 15-minute presentation from your interim administrator, from your director of HR. I would have wanted a report back. There is an awful lot of this and that and so forth, and I don't even know if all of you understand what, well, actually, I hope you do, because I certainly got no information about what's going on, except for suddenly you want to outsource. That may or may not be a great idea. I don't have an opinion on that either. And one of the justifications for that is saving money, except for if we could please make sure we don't lose any employees, because that wouldn't be very nice to the people in the HR department. So that is contradictory. And you're throwing up ideas about bias, and I don't really understand the concept of internal people and bias versus an outside firm that you will be in charge of. The real issue is what are your policies and what's the problem? And we don't know. But anyway, that's my comment. I guess I did use my full three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to speak on the motion on the floor? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment, and Commissioner Ball is on the board.
Yes, I want to address some of the comments that I've heard. I wanted to put this on the agenda, but I just found out more yesterday, actually, and it was too late to put it on there. So, and I wasn't going to wait until our next meeting to bring this forward. It's too important. And I really thought at first, when you made the comment about confidentiality, that does come into play with HR, and I'm trying to be very careful about what I say because of it. And I will tell you that I've had conversation with the county attorney on it, and so I make sure that I follow through on what he tells me to do, okay? Because that's, we need to protect, as you talked about our employees in this building, you know, we have a lot, and so we need to protect them to the best of our ability. And that's really what brought this forward today, from my part. The gap funding, I'm sorry, you don't maybe know about gap funding. Trust me, this is not a new topic for this board, so I apologize that we didn't maybe go into more detail with, you know, the citizens here today, but, you know, it's not really a new topic for us. It's just a matter of how we wanted to move forward with it or if we wanted to move forward. So that's why you maybe didn't see a full presentation, because we really didn't, this board really didn't need one on that. So I just wanted to mention those things, because, you know, a lot of people, you know, politics does come into play. I'm sorry, you can't speak again. I apologize. You can send me an email or talk to my aide.
I understood the gap funding.
Okay, well.
Okay, you're not on the record, ma'am. We're not taking comments from the audience. Commissioner Ball, you have the floor. Please continue.
I apologize, but we can't do it. It's policy procedures. But at any rate, but my aide over here, Dana, will definitely give you our email and so forth.
She was just trying to clarify that she got the gap funding and she understood.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, well. So I just wanted to make sure that I cleared up. The main thing for me today was HR, not the gap funding, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Commissioner. I put myself on the board just to clarify that I'm pretty, I'm very familiar with what's going on with HR. I simply did not want to air dirty laundry.
No.
My intentions here are that I want to provide better service to our employees, and I think that if we are looking to make major changes in HR, I think, I view it as an opportunity to outsource, to create better efficiencies and a better experience for the employees, one, and a more economical way of doing it for taxpayers, number two. So that's where I fell. All right, there's no one else on the board at this time. We've held public comment. We can move forward with the vote. The motion is by Ball, the second is by Satcher. And it passes unanimously, Madam Clerk, by a vote of seven to zero. All right. Commissioner, okay, Commissioner Ball has one more thing. I'll reserve my comment, that I was going to say, let's power through this and not go lunch.
One more thing. The Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, we had a meeting yesterday, and we are having a resiliency summit on May the 4th and 5th. It's going to be at the Hilton Clearwater Beach Resort. I'm hoping that some of the commissioners might like to attend. Dana will send you the email with all the information on it.
Are you paying?
I'm sorry?
Are you paying? I might go.
No, I'm not paying for you.
Teasing.
I have to pay for myself.
I know.
But at, but at any rate, I just wanted to mention that. And then the other thing is, the, Mr. Washington, the land use meeting on May the 18th probably needs to be changed. I don't know if you realize that, because we're going to DC. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you, sir. I'm done.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Then we will move on to Commissioner Ron, which is item number 34. And if Commissioner, stop me if you, if you, if you want to. I was going to keep pushing through this, and I mean, my number 38 item is like two minutes. There's literally nothing to it. Satcher, how long are yours? Pretty, pretty efficient items there?
I'm hoping I can just present them and we vote.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking. Okay. So we will move on to Commissioner Ron, then, item number 34.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the board remembers, previous work session we had with the clerk, we were tasked with coming up with a, or redesigning our investment, our investment policy. So we'd like to do, Mr. Chair, so I can do this in two, we got to accept investment policy, then we got to accept the investment advisory board, so.
Do we get to make a motion?
Yeah, the motion, what this says.
So I have a number, I have a motion on the floor.
Okay, I got it. It's all one motion.
It's all one motion.
Yes, sir. So that would be what it is. We need to appoint, once we accept the investment advisory committee, we need to appoint a county commissioner to sit on that as well. It will be advertised as an advisory committee, and there will be one person from the Senate Serre that will, with investment experience, be appointed to that also by this board.
Thank you, sir. And I apologize, I did not follow proper decorum and introduce the item into the records. I'll do that now. Item number 34 is adoption of resolution R-23-057, establishing an investment oversight committee and adopting Manatee County's investment policy under section 218.1415 Florida statutes. There is a motion on the floor to approve item number 34. The motion has been made by Commissioner Ball. It has been seconded by Commissioner Ballard. There's no one on the board for discussion, so we'll open this up to public comment now. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on item number 34 on today's agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we're going to close public comment. There's still no one on the board for discussion, so we'll move forward with the vote. And the vote passes unanimously, Madam Clerk, by a vote of seven to zero. Sir, did you want to get into appointing the?
Yes, we need to appoint a commissioner to sit on the investment advisory committee.
I appoint Commissioner Ron.
Second.
Okay, so with seven potential candidates and one available seat, a motion is made to appoint, by Commissioner Cruz, to appoint Commissioner Ron to that seat, and it is seconded by Commissioner Ball.
I move to close nominations.
And we have a motion to close nominations by Commissioner Ballard, which has been seconded by Commissioner Cruz. Verbally, all in favor of closing nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Madam Clerk, Commissioner Ron is appointed unanimously. Commissioner Ron, you have the floor. You may make your acceptance speech now, sir.
Thank you, Board, for the trust that you have in me.
Whoa, 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 I didn't hold on that.
Yeah, I didn't. No one said trust. Trust was nowhere in there.
You just did it because you didn't want it.
Are you quoting the nomination?
If you guys want an investment policy entirely full of gap financing, you could have put me on.
No, that's fair.
Commissioner Ron, is there anything else you'd like to add, sir?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. We're moving on to Commissioner Satcher, and I'll introduce the items for you, sir. He is going to be introducing item number 35, or discussing item number 35, the discussion on the enhancement of the tuition reimbursement program. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, recently, relatively recent, last year or two, we started a tuition reimbursement program, and one of the issues that we're having, that I'm running into repeatedly, is not having enough paramedics and EMTs to hire. We're not, we're doing a relatively good job as far as what we're paying them, but the candidates aren't out there. So I would like to enhance that program, expand it to where, if you're an EMT in Manatee County, you can get reimbursed to go to paramedic school, or whatever, like training, and anything that, you know, there may be other options out there, but basically to expand that program so that we train more people to do jobs that we need done, especially those that aren't necessarily, you know, glamorous, I'm going to go get my master's and what, that might not be what we need. We need people that can get jobs done, that help people. And then the administrator's also spoken about, if we do make a significant investment, to maybe changing the amount of commitment that comes to the county, but we can work out those details moving forward.
Thank you, sir. Exciting topic. The speaking order is Cruz, Ballard, Van Austinbridge, and Bearden.
I'm 30 seconds. You kind of, after I put myself on, you said at the end, yeah, we just need to make sure that we're not training Pinellas County EMT people, because that's what happens when we train people, they end up going someplace else, and we have a great training program. But I'm 100% on board with this, so thank you for bringing it.
Commissioner Ballard.
So I am also very much on board with this. We already offer tuition investment, reimbursement for things like master's degrees, and why are we not offering tuition reimbursement for that, that kind of blue-collar training and workforce training that so many employees can benefit from? So I think it's a win-win. I think we should definitely do this and most likely expand it.
Thank you, ma'am. And I'm next on the board, and Commissioner Satcher, this is a great idea you brought forward. Mr. Washington and Mr. Clegg, my question would be, should we limit ourselves to EMT, to paramedic? I mean, what about guys who need to get a CDL? What about folks who want to become welders and, you know, who are in utilities, are already in public works, and they've signed some sort of an agreement to stay with Manatee County for a certain period of time in exchange for other training in the trades? Mr. Washington?
Yes, sir. I'm 100% in agreement. And that's exactly what Commissioner Satcher and I discussed about. There's more than just EMTs going for paramedics. You have plumbers, you have, you know, surveyors, a lot of different professions that can benefit Manatee County and its residents. So what I'm looking for, I guess, is just guidance from the board of just expanding the framework of the current tuition program and bring back to the board for adoption.
So you're looking for a direction from the board for you to bring us back a program for post, for additional education for the trades?
That is correct. That is correct. To include the expansion of the commitment to the county after such payment has been made.
So moved.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Satcher, seconded by Van Austinbridge, to expand tuition reimbursement to include, to bring back to the board a program that expands tuition reimbursement to the trades. Commissioner Bearden is on the board. Okay, Commissioner Bearden is off the board. We'll open this up to public comment. No one else is on the board to speak. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to come forward to speak on the motion on the floor? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. The motion is by Satcher, seconded by Van Austinbridge. We can cast our votes now. And Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Next item is also Commissioner Satcher's, item number 36, discussion on adding Good Friday as an unpaid county, excuse me, as a paid county holiday. Discussion on adding Good Friday as a paid county holiday. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Currently, the clerk, the tax collector, all of our constitutional officers in Manatee County have Good Friday as a paid holiday, and I think that we should follow suit. I'm not sure why we haven't already, but I make a motion to add Good Friday as a paid county holiday from this point forward.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Satcher, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Baugh. We'll open, there's no one on the board for discussions. We'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to come forward to speak on item number 36 on today's agenda? So, ma'am, when you're at the podium, please state your first name, your last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to discuss the motion on the floor.
Hi, I'm Shannon Keever. I'm with Women's Voices of Southwest Florida, and I live in Bradenton. I have an issue with Good Friday being a paid holiday. The First Amendment says, "Congress shall make no law respecting and establishment of religion, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." From my understanding, county employees already have three floating holidays. That's my understanding, from what I read on the website. Good Friday is very specifically a religious holiday. Manatee County employees already have three floating holidays, and that should be used for their personal religious holidays. I fully support that. Specifying Good Friday as a paid holiday is placing one very specific religion over other religions, when you have an entire county full of residents who are various religions, and some who practice no religion. Juneteenth is a national holiday. Why Good Friday and not Juneteenth? You don't have that as a paid holiday for your county employees. I don't support the other government entities that have Good Friday off as a paid holiday. I would support them also having floating holidays. That would be fine with me. I noticed that Manatee County has three weeks of PTO, plus two weeks of sick leave, which is great. It just, commissioners get a full month off in the summer. Manatee County doesn't have any parental leave. I'm sorry, is that not correct? It's, you have it off, not really off? I could understand, it's probably, yeah, that makes sense. But anyways, there's no parental leave. Manatee County doesn't even have any parental leave. So, if you're going to use taxpayer money to give paid time off, I would suggest Juneteenth as a holiday over Good Friday, and work on your parental leave, because that should be open to parents who have newborns or adopt. Most companies offer that. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward to speak on item number 35 on today's agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah. I mean, while it's not a federal holiday, Good Friday is a state holiday. It's, Florida's one of 12 states in the country that treat Good Friday as a holiday, like, to his point. Our clerk's office is closed, most of our other facilities are closed. Almost every place I ever worked in my entire life is closed on Good Friday. It's an accepted kind of day off. If we want to expand to federal holidays, I'll be open to that, including Juneteenth. I'm okay with that. But just be prepared for everyone to have Columbus Day off, because that's also a federal holiday. I'm just saying, if we want to expand it to all federal holidays, I'm open to that discussion. As for summer, there is time off of the summer relative to board's meeting, but that's the extent of our recess. It allows staff time, because staff works very hard to prepare for these meetings, and that's when their kids are off school. So, it prevents them from having to put together all the documentation, all the briefings for our meetings. We're still up at FAC and NACO, and I have a town hall during our break. Everyone here is still working. We just take a recess from physical meetings, and a lot of that has to do with our staff having time off. Otherwise, they work tirelessly while we're in these meetings.
Thank you, sir. We have Bearden and Satcher on the board as well. Commissioner Bearden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Keever, I think you're kinda confused by the definition of separation of church and state. We do celebrate Christmas, right, from a federal standpoint, as well as a local and a state standpoint as well. So, I think you need to look and study that definition a little bit more intensely, and come back to the board and see what that is, because honestly, your definition of church and state is not correct. So, I think having a holiday of Good Friday is a great idea for the citizens of Manatee County, and I think it's something that we all need to celebrate.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Satcher, at the end here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to say, in general, the discussions about Juneteenth, that is one of my, I like Juneteenth, because we celebrate God, God-given freedom, and the news and the announcement that that is about to be, that is being enforced, the word going out, from, where Republican president fought, you know, led a tough war, the first Republican president of the United States of America fought a tough war to make sure that people's freedoms were enforced. So, I'm a big fan of Juneteenth as well, but I don't think that we have become, or should become, such a society that we ignore our history and the culture around us, so that we can no longer mention something that may have a religious origin. And so, I don't think that there's a downside at all here to celebrating someone that was willing to pay a price that we should've had to pay ourselves, and instead, he did it for us, not forcing anyone to celebrate it. We're just offering a free day off, and if someone wants to come and work anyway, I'm sure that the administration could work on something like that. But I think this is a, I think this is a good move for the county, and for the people, for, and for the nation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. We've held public comment. There's no other commissioners on the board. Motion by Satcher, seconded by Baugh. We can cast our votes now. And Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. We'll now move on to item number 37, Commissioner Satcher's item, update and discussion on personnel policy. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For item number 37, this isn't something that's been spoken about many times in the past, so the county attorney, in conjunction, you know, with administration, has worked on putting together a policy that seems to go along with our discussions, that would reinforce, make an actionable, where the rubber meets the road, an actionable way of allowing our employees to exercise their Second Amendment rights, and also be able to protect themselves. Of course, the intention, and I've spoken about this, is to never create a place where we make criminals the most powerful people in the room, or in the building. I think that's wrong, to have criminal empowerment zones, and so I work to eliminate those whenever I can. And so, one of the ways that we can do that is by allowing an employee that otherwise would be allowed to carry, to carry, if they work for Manatee County. Just consistent with us being a sanctuary county, it makes a lot of sense. And so, I'm bringing this forward, and this, the verbiage is put together by the county attorney, and he has no objections, as far as I know, to the verbiage. Of course, it's at the pleasure of the board, if you wanted to change something. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Thank you, and thank you for staying on this, and continuing to, you know, see it through to the finish, hopefully to the finish line. The speaking order is Cruz, Bearden, Clegg, and Ballard. Mr. Clegg, do you feel obligated to go first, before we start?
I just want to clarify, yes, I would, please. I did want to clarify, it was the administrator that put it together. We need to give credit where credit's due. We did review it, and we gave him comments yesterday, but it was, it was Mr. Washington's office that, that put it together. And I guess I need to ask him, do we, does the board need to vote on this, or is this something that was intended to be done as an administrative procedure? Because when I reviewed it, it looked like an administrative procedure.
Mr. Washington?
I'm sure the board can vote on it, but-
Well, I think the board needs to vote on it.
Okay.
There's some tweaks that still need to be made-
Fair.
-for consideration, but I think the framework in itself, what's been shared in the draft, I think it's sufficient enough for the board to give us direction to turn this into a policy, and even bring it back, once we make those tweaks, if necessary.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, here's, here's the thing with this, because we've gotten a lot of emails from people, relative to their opinion on it, and they're implying things are gonna be less safe, or we're voting on allowing guns in this building. Here's what you don't understand. We do allow guns in this building, right this minute before this vote. Other than the deputies in this room, because otherwise, you cannot have one in this room, by Florida statute. We can't prohibit the public from coming in here with a gun. They have every right, with concealed carry, to come into this building. They can't come into this room, because that's part of statute, because any meeting of a legislative board cannot have a weapon, just like at an airport and a courthouse. But within this building itself, on our ninth floor, where we're working, on the ninth floor where HR is, if there's a, any, anybody in the public is legally allowed to come in here with a concealed weapon, right now. The only people not allowed, so 400,000 residents can walk into this building freely with a concealed weapon. 2,000 people cannot, and they're employees here. And this isn't a unique thing, like, a quarter of, based on our survey, like, a quarter of the counties have this, and not like, these, like, yeah, these counties up on the panel. No, Orange County allows this as well. They're a, they're a blue county, they're a big county, they allow this. You know, there are counties that allow this. And in fact, in 2011, the Florida Legislature made it legal for people to carry concealed weapons in the Capitol Building of the state of Florida, even though they have metal detectors. Yeah, don't shake your head, because I promise you, I'm right. There's metal detectors, but all the metal detector does, if you read it, is it allows the deputies there to check whether or not someone has a concealed permit, and then they can bring a gun in, effective, once everything moves forward with the new bill passing. They're not even gonna be able to check for that, because now it's, now it's permissible carry. People are allowed to bring guns, and if you ever go to that Capitol, people wander those halls. You have, you have commissioners from, you know, every county. You have people on the cabinet for the governor, walking around freely in that building, and everybody in that building, including the legislators and their staff, are freely permitted, permitted to have a concealed weapon on them, in our, in our state Capitol. There's never been an instance that I'm aware of, in that Capitol, even with huge protests and sit-ins, where having this concealed weapon, you know, allowance was a problem. In all the other counties that have this, I've never read anything where there was a problem. And everyone else in this county is allowed to bring a weapon here. To say, well, you can't have those 2,000 people have it, is ridiculous, all right? I mean, I think this is a fair policy. I don't see why every other county doesn't have it. You know, it should be all or nothing, but it certainly shouldn't be nothing. I have absolutely no problem with this whatsoever.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ballard.
So, I am in support of this. I do have one question, just about section B, I guess it's B1. So, not have a domestic violence charge on his or her record, or an injunction, is prohibited from carrying a concealed weapon of any kind. So, what I'm curious about is, is when that goes into effect, and how long that stays into effect. So, is it the moment that, that an injunction is filed, and then when the injunction is taken away, then the person can then carry concealed again? Is this, or, or is it the moment that the domestic violence is charged criminally, or is it once a conviction occurs? So, I just want to clarify the verbiage.
Sorry.
I would construe that, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioner Ballard, is, for the first part of it, it refers to their record. So, if it's on their record, it's in perpetuity. If they have that on their record, then they're not able to exercise the right in perpetuity. An injunction really only applies while that injunction is in effect.
And that was, that was kind of my-
That's how that I would, I would read that.
That was how I thought as well.
Yeah.
And so, the domestic violence charge, you construe that as-
On his or her record.
Is that before conviction, or?
Well, we don't, we only see, at least my understanding is, when we do criminal background checks of employees, we typically see criminal records.
Okay. Okay. Okay, that's-
That's a conviction.
So, that's all. I just, I just wanted to clarify the limits. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Bearden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I just wanted to say, I appreciate Commissioner Satcher for bringing this forward. I also appreciate Commissioner Cruz's comments regarding this, so, appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Baugh.
Yeah. I guess my question is, on the zero tolerance workplace violence thing that we received, is this according to state law, or is this something that, it says Jennifer Harmon on here? Did she come up with all this, or is this more or less by the state? I don't know.
The majority of this was drafted by the previous county administrator and the HR director at the time, taking pieces from the state guidance. Just to get us to this point, we have to tweak it for Manatee County government, to ensure that we've checked all the boxes, but I would say it was mostly led by the previous county administrator that was sent out last September.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay, and your office, Mr. County Attorney, did look at this?
We did review it. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. There's no one else on the board for discussion. We'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would, well, sorry, I have two names that are already signed up. Virginia McCollum, Virginia McCollum, and then Holly Kennedy will follow her. Holly Kennedy will follow her. So, I know it sounds redundant, because I just stated your first and last name, but for the record, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to speak on the motion on the floor.
Okay, Virginia McCollum, Manatee County. And first of all, shame on you for titling this item, "Update and Discussion on Personnel Policy," disguising the topic. Unbelievable. And secondly, shame on you for not providing any documents. Clearly, you all are referring to a draft policy that was not made public, at all, even late. So, shame on you. So, I'm here as a resident and taxpayer. We don't agree on guns, but I think we can agree that potential costs and liability should be managed responsibly. I have heard you all talk about fiscal responsibility and limiting financial exposure repeatedly. If for no other reason, please do not change the policy and expose the county and taxpayers to the potential of large expenses related to medical, local economic, and lawsuits, if the worst happens here, in this building, or any county workplace. I have documents to share with information about costs to organizations and communities of gun violence, if I may submit them. They're from the federal GAO, they're from every town with gun safety, and they outline the economic cost, if I may do that. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. First and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to speak on the motion on the floor.
Same as before. Holly Kennedy, Manatee County. Thank you for your time, thank you for your service, and thank you for listening to the public. We don't all agree, obviously, and I completely understand where you're coming from. I do fundamentally disagree with the soundness of this proposal to arm county employees and deputize them to shoot people while they're on the job, thereby weaponizing the workplace designed to serve the public. We most likely, in fact, most totally disagree about the premise that armed employees will make a workplace safer. Statistics do show that that's not the case, but I don't think we're really interested in statistics. You do have constitutionally, legal alternative, constitutional legal alternatives to regulate bringing guns into government buildings and government workplaces, and I'm sure you can work with your county attorney, who can outline them for you. And I do encourage you to research all the viable ways to ensure your safety and harden your facilities. And I like having armed, deputized guards with, guards with guns in holsters that are secured. That I like, I think that's a great idea. Whether or not, how you're carrying, I have no idea. Anyway, I do think the proposed policy to arm employees raises many questions and liability issues. Key questions include: Who actually gets to be armed? Who are those employees? Is it everyone, all 2,000 employees, including full-time, part-time, contracted, or subcontracted employees? Do they fulfill all county government roles, including bus drivers, park and rec staff, libraries, librarians, tourist personnel, ground crews? The outsourced human resources business that you want to hire, are all those people considered employees and they get to carry as well while they're dealing with their own employees of the county? What defines a workplace? Is it just the building? Or does it include the parks, the pools, the rec centers, the libraries, vehicles that you're traveling in, other workspaces that are not government buildings? What about being armed when you're conducting county business or attending events away from the defined primary workplace? And/or your job is in fact traveling all the time on behalf of the county, you don't actually have a primary workplace? If you're out there surveying, going into other people's homes and so forth, is everyone carrying at all levels of government wherever they are? And is the public going to be informed about that? How do you define concealed? Does concealed mean on your body at all times and securely holstered? Or does it also include concealed in a desk drawer, backpack, purse, locker, coat pocket, common room? Ha, I have more.
Thank you, ma'am.
If attended, will the loaded firearm?
Thank you, ma'am.
Have to be secured? I hope you look at all alternatives before arming everyone in the county.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, is there anyone else from the public who would like to come forward to speak on item number, on the motion on the floor? Please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
Here he comes.
I have an expert on the way.
Yeah.
All right, bud, give it a try. Yeah, there we go.
Xavier Fisher. Xavier Fisher.
Okay, go ahead, Xavier.
I think any employee shouldn't bring any guns or any, anywhere, because you might accidentally shoot somebody. Well, because it's bad.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to speak? Yes, ma'am. So please state your first name, your last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to address the board regarding the motion on the floor.
I'm Graciela Greenberg, and I live in Manatee County. I have one question and one comment. My question is, has every employee of the county at every level been surveyed about this? Their colleagues carrying a gun while they're working? And my comment is that I read late last night, after many Zoom meetings related to politics and to the county, that in Kentucky yesterday, a man, a 25-year-old man with a gun, killed five of his colleagues during a meeting, and injured, gravely injured eight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. I think you know the routine now.
Maybe. My name is Shannon Keever, and I am with Women's Voices of Southwest Florida, and I live in Bradenton still. Okay, so I have a lot of questions that maybe could have been answered had you released this draft that you have all been up there discussing, that the rest of the public hasn't seen. I don't understand how you can make a vote on something that the public hasn't even had the chance to read and comment on. And you slip this in deceptively. That wasn't, that's not okay. Last year, when this was brought up, you directed Mr. Hope's to conduct a survey of the county employees to see if they even want this. Some received an email from some of their superiors saying, hey, do you want this? That was not anonymous. It's not a real survey. You need to do that before going forward with a vote. Make sure this is something that the county employees actually want and not just you. Is this for all in-county employees? Like, like somebody mentioned, like, I don't want somebody coming on my property who I don't know who has a gun. I don't know them. I don't know that they're safe with a gun. Does this include people who are working with children? Does this include teachers, or is that a school board issue? Will the employees be required to undergo any kind of safety training or report that they're armed? Who will they report it to? If so, what will the restrictions be? I heard a little tidbit about domestic violence, I'd like to know more about that. What happens when someone leaves their firearm unsecured? I say it, I say when, not if, because human error, it happens with 2,000 employees. What happens when there's an incident that occurs? Is there going to have, are you going to have to take out extra insurance for this that we're going to be paying for? Not long ago, a Manatee County employee was arrested at the workplace. He was arrested for violent crimes, SA, I don't want to say the word right now, of a toddler. They had to, they arrested him knowing that he wouldn't be armed. Are you at all concerned about how that would have gone down had he had a gun? What kind of, what kind of peril that would have put the other employees and the officers arresting him in? You now have scan access to your workplace and armed guards, why do you feel that the current security is inept? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to address the board on the motion on the floor.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Craig Fisher, live in Manatee County. I feel like this is just falling on deaf ears, so you guys can hear our comments, but my comments are more questions for the attorney. So we all know that more guns means more accidents. You know, an officer left his gun on a toilet, somebody got shot, or somebody found it. County attorney, who will be responsible for when we do have a county shooting? I mean, guns in the employees, who will be responsible for that? Is the taxpayers now fitting that bill? Have we done a risk analysis for letting all of our 2,000 employees carry guns? I work with county employees on a weekly basis. How do I know that that county employee is not going to have a mental health problem? And so what I hear from Republicans is, hey, we have a mental health problem, not a gun problem. So have we done mental health evaluations on all of our employees? Because I'm going to be honest with you, when somebody has a mental health problem, it's not like, hey, we knew about this. Somebody can snap in a single day. I work with inspectors, I work with, you know, county employees. What are you guys doing to ensure that your constituents are going to be safe from the employees that might have a mental health problem? Are we doing mental health evaluations on our employees? I'm going to say no, because that's going to be a HIPAA violation. So I think these ladies back here pretty much said it all, but I think we need more information from the county attorney on what are the risks that you guys are putting us in by doing this. So I'd like to hear more from a legal aspect. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. We have two commissioners on the board, Cruz and Satcher, and Chair is entertaining calls of the question at any time. Question's been called. We'll vote on the question. All in favor of calling the question, please say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Madam Clerk, the question passes by a vote of six to one with Commissioner Cruz in opposition. I'm sorry?
Who made the vote, sir?
Who made the motion?
The motion, excuse me.
Commissioner Baugh. And it was, and I seconded, me. Okay. So the question's been called. The motion has been made by Commissioner Baugh to approve, seconded by Ballard. We can cast our votes now. And of course, we've held public comment. Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Commissioner Satcher, did you have anything else to add, sir?
You took me off the board, then you go to him after you call a question?
He put himself back on.
Yeah, if I could wipe evil off the face of the earth, I would, but I don't have that option. So I feel like the best option is to allow the good guys to get, to have a fighting chance. And, because the bad guys aren't following the rules. And we were asked if we've done any study on the cost. And the cost for having no good guys willing to stand up is 17. Five years ago, it cost 17 people their lives when no one was there to defend them in here in Florida. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, thank you. Commissioner Cruz has put himself on the board as well.
Yeah, because I just want to answer some of the, the things that were said, just so people, just so the public understands what's going on. Yes, who, who has a right to with this policy? Everybody does, because they're all U.S. citizens, they have a right to, to carry a gun. And this isn't really a policy we're adding. I, I think it's misinterpreted. We're not adding a policy. We, we're taking away a policy and making, making it the status quo of every place else in the state of Florida in the United States. This is a policy we put in, not a policy we are putting in, we're taking one out. And to say, you know, now we're, we're less safe? There could be 400,000 people with guns in here. What makes 400,001 people the threshold where now it becomes unsafe? Just because it's a, a staff member instead of a citizen, who equally could have mental health problems? You talk about when someone shows up at a house, or Craig left, but he, he talked about working with our inspectors. When our inspector shows up to work with, with a citizen, how does our inspector know that citizen doesn't have a mental health problem and have a gun on them? When we send code enforcement out someplace, who, who's to say the person living in that house doesn't, isn't armed? And they don't, and they're in their own house, they don't even have to have a concealed gun. They could show up at the door with a gun in their hand if they wanted. They're, they're still in private residence. Should the policy then be that we, we inquire ahead of time with every building and every residence, whether or not they have a firearm, and if they do, we're no longer, we're no longer required to go service them? We're no longer required to, to work on their yard because we feel unsafe? It, it, that's ridiculous. This, this is effectively leveling a playing field and taking away a policy and making this status quo for everybody.
Thank you, sir. Move on to, yes, well said. We're moving on to item number 38, which is my item, discussion on the Skyway Spoil Island Boat Ramp and Park. So this is something that was discussed going back like a year or two years, probably. We've talked about this. And the idea, generally speaking, was that in like, at this point, eight or nine years, the Army Corps is going to dredge the shipping channel leading into Tampa Bay, and there's going to be a massive amount of fill material generated as a result of that. And so we had talked about creating an island, right, you know, not far off of the shoreline, but basically, they have to get rid of that material, they have to put it somewhere. So it would be free. And so the idea was to get them to give us the fill on, as an island, directly off of the, would be the southwest side of the Skyway, so not where the rest area is on the Manatee County side, but on the other side. There's virtually no seagrass there at all, so that wouldn't be an issue. Then we had a port meeting, that was our last port, maybe it was maybe our last port meeting, and the guy from Jax came down, the Army Corps guy came down from Jax and was talking to us, and he said that the new general of the Army Corps has challenged the Corps with finding a public purpose for at least 80% of the fill material that the Corps generates. So we went over there and started talking to him, and Hunsaker and I got in his ear and said, you know, how much do you have? Do you have any extra? What do you, what do you got? And he says, you know, we have huge amounts of fill material. I have no idea how we're going to possibly find a public purpose for 80% of it. He says, we only public purpose maybe 15% of it last year. So I was like, okay. So I said, would you consider giving us this? And he said, absolutely, I have to get rid of this stuff, like, I really have to get rid of it. Hunsaker spoke to him maybe like two weeks ago and told him, hey, we're thinking like a five or 10 acre island, you know, out here, and gave him the depth, and, and he ran up the numbers, and he says, that's only like, you know, I don't remember how many, I think it was like 300,000 cubic yards or something, and he's like, I really need to unload like a minimum of a million. And so we're like, oh, okay. So I told Charlie, I was like, hold everything, you know? I need to go to the board and talk to the board. And I guess what I'm looking for is permission to, for Charlie and I to continue to engage them and to talk to like Tom Yager or Charlie Bishop about what, what could we do with a 20-acre island, for instance? And I, I don't know, and if we go deeper, that chews up a lot more fill, too. We go, you know, deeper out with the, with the island, instead of stretching it long ways. Obviously, we could put a boat ramp on it. It, it would be utilized by a lot of people from Pinellas, just to be honest, right? So it's like a regional asset. You could put, I mean, that kind of size, you could put 300 parking spaces out there easily. It's right in the mouth of the bay, like the most primo location to launch. We could put a park on it, right? We could put an amphitheater on it, it doesn't really cost us anything, it just kind of sits there. But you could put pavilions and a playground and a, and a park out there easily. It's just, it's just ideas. I'm sure the more we sit here, the more ideas we can come up with, it's all just money. But if the fill is free and there is potential for like a 20-acre island out there, it's right on the border of Commissioner Satcher and Ice Districts, right at the Skyway. There's, there's plenty of infrastructure to get to and from it, there's utilities, there's water there. So it has a lot of potential. And what I'm looking for is permission to basically utilize staff time to pursue it.
I move, I move to give, or to direct staff to work on forming as large of an island as we can for public purpose.
Okay, thank you, sir. So.
Take me off and put him on.
So we have a motion, I don't know, do I even need a motion, Mr. Clegg? I mean, is, is this simply good enough to have this discussion?
It's up to the board, honestly.
We'll do the motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Satcher.
Probably better have the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Satcher, it's been seconded by Bearden. We'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on the motion on the floor, which is to allow staff to work with me to engage the Army Corps on fill material? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment at this time. No one's on the board for discussion, so we'll cast our votes now. And thank you, Commissioner Satcher and Commissioner Bearden, and everybody else. All right, passes seven to zero, Madam Clerk. Get my dirt, yeah. The dirt's the easy part, it's the building it out on top, it's the problem. So we, we will do Commissioner comments really quickly. We'll start with, at the top and work our way down. Commissioner, District Seven. Oh, sorry, George, District Seven. He has nothing. District Six.
Yeah, so, sorry, so like last, was it last week or the week before, during the land use meeting, we made a vote, and that vote was for the Parish Farms Preserve property to allow staff to, to kind of move forward with that and do their due diligence in regards to whether we were going to acquire that land in the future. And so.
This was the LMAC vote.
Yeah, correct, the LMAC vote. And so, and you know, I believe I made a mistake on that vote, due to the fact that when they come back with the number, I most likely would not probably approve that, because it's, they're going to come back with a, a big, big number, and it's going to cost us a lot of money. So I want, I want to move to rescind the board's.
Reconsider?
What's that?
Reconsider.
Reconsider.
No, it's rescind.
Rescind.
Rescind, I'm sorry.
The board's direction to staff to proceed with due diligence in anticipation of acquisition of the Parish Farms Preserve property. I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion to rescind the vote that was stated by Commissioner Bearden so well. And I apologize for trying to correct you, you clearly came prepared. And that has been seconded by Commissioner Ron. We'll open this up to public comment, as there's no one on the board. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on this item? Okay. We're going to close public comment, as no one has come forward, and we can cast our, oh, I'm sorry, we have people on the board to speak. Commissioner Satcher's on the board.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say that, you know, this might end up being a moot point, from what I'm hearing behind the scenes, I think that the people that own the land currently are kind of getting cold feet anyway. Just a lot of, I think this is kind of ripping the Band-Aid off, I don't think this is going to end up moving forward, regardless of this vote.
And it's smart to not waste staff time. Commissioner Bearden.
And, and it's, it's only fair to the property owners as well. You know, they're going to be, you know, in this position where they're at right now, they could be spending a lot of time and money trying to move it forward, and if it's not going to move forward at that time, then I just want to. not going to move forward at that time, then I just want it to be a fair...
Sure.
Fair to them as well, so.
So, Mr. Clegg, the vote will be to rescind...
Yes.
...the motion. And then once the motion has... Once we have passed that vote, do we need to come back to make a second vote to rehear it, or is that...
No.
Are we essentially voting on it for a second time at this point?
Correct. So what's...
So the motion...
I went back and looked. It's item 78 on the March 28 regular meeting agenda, and what the board was asked to do at that time was to make motions to direct staff to move forward with due diligence in anticipation of acquisition for specific properties, and this was one of them. You can change direction to staff. We used to have a rule about reconsideration that put some artificial constraints on the board being able to do that. You had to do it at the next meeting and so forth. We took that out of our procedures when we revised the procedures maybe a year ago.
Okay.
So what you're doing is basically saying, staff, we've changed our mind. We are telling you to stand down. You no longer have direction to proceed with due diligence and acquisition on this property, and that's the end of it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah. I mean, it sounds like if they're... If the owners are looking at potentially doing something else, I agree. I don't want to waste staff time. I still think it's a decent location for the property, but I was pretty sure it was going to be too high of a price for us. I kind of have already stated I don't really want to buy anything with this money. I think conservation easements are a much better way. I already have Charlie trying to pull a map and get an idea of that. I've been doing a lot of research on it to see what we can do. So if they're looking at something else, I don't want to waste staff time. There's better use of that time for other purposes for LMAC, so I'm on board with pulling it. And if it ever comes back, if they say, hey, we're not doing something with it, or hey, we'll sell it to you for a buck, then we can reconsider it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So we'll open this up to public comment, then. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on this item? The motion on the floor. Okay. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Noah's on the board, so now we are voting on rescinding the original motion. And it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you, sir.
No party.
Is there any... Anything else while you still have the floor? Okay. District five.
What about me?
Was Commissioner comments.
Oh, Lord, mercy.
There's more in those notes?
Yes, I've got a lot of notes today. I'm just trying to make sure. You know, there is one other thing, and it's about the...
Commissioner Baugh, please put on your microphone.
Can we get new microphones, please? You know what? Never mind. I'll pass. Never mind.
Okay. District four.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I would like to do is request a future work session on the policies and procedures for LMAC. I would like to review those. The last meeting we had was... I'm not going to say a waste of time, but it was a waste of time. When they brought forward for us some baby, haphazardly, okay, look at a property, I think we need to review from top to bottom the whole LMAC procedure and how we move that forward and how we instruct the LMAC committee, advisory board, and staff to bring properties to our attention that have been nominated.
Thank you, sir. District three doesn't have anything. District two.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
District one.
I think Commissioner Ron makes a good point, but I have nothing further.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Clegg, do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Mr. Washington?
I do not, sir.
All right. Good meeting, everyone. We're adjourned.